Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk. Please call the roll so that we can establish your call.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Present.
Councilmember Laloe.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shanier.
Here.
Councilmember Begata.
Aye, here, sorry.
Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Jennings, you're on mute.
I am here.
Thank you. Mayor Vang.
And Councilmember Vang.
I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Daryl Steinberg is here, and thank you for voting Councilmember Vang. Good thing, okay. Just teasing. Good afternoon, everybody. I want to say to the public to apologize for being a half hour late here. The city's council's budget and audit committee had a lengthy meeting on the very important mid-year budget, and then it closed session, which was time sensitive. And so it forced us a half hour later, we've been allowed inconvenience people. Let us all rise, those who can. I'd like Pro Tem Ashby, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Sure, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Members, on the consent calendar, I want to continue this item one week and explain why. I had a good conversation with Councilmember Valenzuela. We're not ready to make any exciting announcement yet, but it does appear that the executive order that President Biden signed in his first days in office may provide us with some immense resources and relief to bring our unsheltered homeless population indoors. And so I want to just wait for a week on this so we can get clarification on its scope. I tend to bring this back next week, but I want to at least have the opportunity to potentially incorporate some of that, some of the clarification we get in terms of the magnitude of the federal assistance to alleviate our homeless problem. So I take a motion to continue. Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes, if I could, yeah, that was good. So moved. But I also, if I could make a brief comment just supporting one, I want to uplift the sense of urgency that you named last week, Mayor, and my continued support for us just doing as much as we can. But frankly, last week, we were in a different world, and tiny homes and parking and camping might have been the best we could do. And today, under a new administration, it looks like that game may be changing, which is really exciting. And so I really support us just taking a week to figure out what's going on and what we can do. So thanks, Mayor, and I'll move the item.
And I want always high expectations. I don't want to get us too excited yet about the scope of the federal executive order. We're still, we're hopeful, but there's still a lot of details to be learned.
Okay, I'm going to be excited, but I'll just keep it over here to myself.
Okay.
And then I'll move the continuing of the item for next week.
Okay. Second, okay, let's call the roll. I assume nobody signed up.
That's accurate. I don't have any callers on that. And was it second by Councilmember Harris?
Correct. It's one week, though. Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Laloe?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Shanier?
Aye.
Councilmember Begata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes, thank you all very much. We'll return to this next week. All right, we move to discussion items two through five, which is the, which is our agenda this evening. Very important work. Let us begin with file item two, the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative.
Mayor, I thought we were going to...
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry, Councilmember Shanier, you're right. I forgot. We had talked about since we have a number of young people that we were going to take item five first without objection, which is the CARES Act-funded Program in SAC Youth Works Impact Brief. Without objection.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. Lindy Lane, your Youth Development Policy Manager. Really excited to be here today to share the outcomes of one of our citywide development CARES investments. To see this pilot program really move from inception to the completion of not one, but two very successful cycles in five short months has been incredible. The true MVP for getting us here today is our lead partner on this project, and that's Pro Youth and Families, who you will hear from in just a few short minutes. The Pro team have been my trusted co-creators for bringing the vision of SAC Youth Works from concept to reality, a vision that really honors collaboration and network building across the youth field as a core driver for improving youth outcomes at scale. As youth developers, we knew very early into COVID and well before research was coming out that out-of-school time programs like SAC Youth Works would need to serve as lifelines, especially for our most vulnerable young people. Since schools closed nationwide in March, the lost opportunities for school year instruction were compounded by the lack of summer and after-school opportunities, particularly for students from low-income or immigrant families. Those who have been traditionally offered the fewest educational opportunities have received even less support over the past several months. The effects of lost learning time will be widely felt, and a recent McKinsey report suggests that these negative effects could last a lifetime and disproportionately impact Black and Latinx students from low-income families. While a valuable yet under-resourced option in typical times, communities nationwide have learned that structured out-of-school time opportunities like SAC Youth Works are even more important during the pandemic and into recovery. Not surprisingly, youth development experts are now heavily emphasizing the role of out-of-school time programs in mitigating learning loss and neutralizing ongoing negative social-emotional impacts on youth caused by COVID. When we designed SAC Youth Works, the primary goal was to develop an infrastructure that enables us to engage as many vulnerable young people as possible in critical opportunities to connect, learn, and earn. By tapping into the citywide network of neighborhood-based providers, the SAC Youth Work structure enables us to reach hundreds of youth per cycle and was intentionally designed to strengthen the unified network and individual capacity of SAC Youth Works partners, especially given the new virtual service delivery requirements. Pro provides technical assistance, core operating support, shared data collection, and capacity-building trainings to the citywide SAC Youth Works Partner Network. In the end, the success of this pilot program is largely due to the contributions of the Sacramento youth provider field and their strong commitment to providing our young people safety, connections, skill-building, and critical applied learning experiences despite the global pandemic. To date, the SAC Youth Works network of nearly 50 citywide neighborhood-based youth providers engaged over 1,300 vulnerable youth and young adults ages 12 to 24 in programming. Each youth participant earned a stipend of up to $500 for completing a minimum of 40 program hours while supporting the city's COVID-19 relief efforts, including helping their peers and other vulnerable city residents cope with isolation and access vital resources such as food, protective equipment, and school supplies. COVID-19 has compounded and illuminated many things. One of those things is something we've long known, that our current school schedule does not meet the needs of all young people. AmericaAfter3PM, the largest national survey on after-school conducted every six years, released new results in December and found that unmet demand for out-of-school time programs has skyrocketed. For every child in an after-school program, three are waiting to get in. Demand remained strong during the pandemic as parents see programs providing critical supports. However, parents were more likely to report challenges accessing after-school programs now compared to the data in 2014. Findings reflect that unmet demand is especially high among low-income Black and Latinx families. Now more than ever, policymakers will determine the extent to which out-of-school time exacerbates or mitigates inequitable educational outcomes for students. In the short term, state and local education leaders can provide opportunities focused on students who have been most impacted by school closures, opportunities like SAC Youth Works. With that, I'll pass it over to Rachel Minnick, Director of Strategic Programs with Pro Youth and Families, to share some specific program outcomes. Rachel?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Lindy, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. That's all right. You all are seeing my deck. Lindy, thank you so much. Does everyone see the screen? Hopefully, yes.
I can see it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. It's very exciting to be here this evening to report with Lindy on the SAC Youth Works Impact Brief. Pro Youth and Families confronts trauma that youth and family face every day, and our goal really is to inspire, educate, and mobilize young people. And in 2017, Pro Youth launched something called the Youth and Family Collective, which is an initiative to unite community partners to help youth, families, and nonprofits learn, earn, and thrive. So it's very exciting for me, as a former executive director of a nonprofit, to now be able to support many of my colleagues and meet many more nonprofit partners as we do this work. Excuse me. So this evening, I'll be your speaker, but I'm really here tonight to be able to showcase one of our youth participants, Jaslyn Hall, who will be coming up in just a moment from Classy Inc. And then we have two SAC Youth Works CBO Partner Providers, Kedrian Belcher-Harris, also from Classy Inc., and Dr. Eric Ravenberg, the president and CEO of the HAWK Institute. So they'll be speaking in just a moment. Just really quickly, I wanted to give you an overview of the Youth and SAC Youth Works by the numbers. Lindy touched on some of the bigger data points, but the average age of youth in our program was 15 and a half. Top four race and ethnicity groups were African-American youth at 38%. 28% reported that they were two or more races. 18% were Latinx, and 10% were Asian. Something really important to note is that we did serve very vulnerable youth. 50% or more of the youth that we serve reported having two or more risk factors. The two most prevalent risk factors were academic underperformance and friends or family members who were in the justice system. Over half of the participants were young women or girls, and 81% reside in the priority neighborhoods as identified by the Inclusive Economic Development Map. Some information that I thought was important to share, too, just the after SAC Youth Works data. And we have so much to share that I could probably be here all night, and I know you don't want me to do that. So I'll just give you the highlights. 80% said after SAC Youth Works, they're more hopeful for the future. 82% said SAC Youth Works gave them experience that they could put on a resume, which was a 26% increase from the start at SAC Youth Works. 83% are confident that they can get a job after participating in SAC Youth Works, which was almost a 50% increase from what you said at the beginning of the program. 86% said the program challenged them to do things that they didn't think they could do. And 97% said that SAC Youth Works showed them ways they could make the community better. And what I thought was really telling is that 100% of you said that they felt safe when they were participating with their SAC Youth Works organization. Lindy touched on some of the different service and work-based learning activities that youth participated in. I won't go through the list, but a lot of it was focused on basic needs, food insecurity, getting clothes, school supplies, PPE, information about COVID out to our community. A lot of it also was focused on mental health and mental wellness, so different strategies that youth could do to support themselves or their peers, and then just basic learning and skill development that you would see in a typical out-of-school time program. But we know that those were really heavily impacted by COVID. So this is, this is certainly not an exhaustive list, but it would not work very well on a slide, so I wanted to summarize it as best I could. And then Jaslyn, if you are ready, and you would be good with coming off the mic and coming on camera, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Jaslyn Hall, and I'll be speaking today about my experience with Classy Inc. One of the things that we did that was a huge inspiration to me was giving back to the community by helping donate to the homeless. Also, the You Matter campaign was a big one, because a lot of us youth struggle with confidence. We also did quite a bit of debates that I almost always participated in, because it allowed me to socialize and have a voice, as well as share my opinion and listen to others, especially during a time when us as youth are feeling so isolated. This program has given us opportunity to meet others and be heard. As youth don't always feel we have a voice or one that matters, because we are not yet adults, so we tend to hold everything in, which then can cause us depression, lack of confidence, and irritability. So to have something like Classy Inc. helps relieve a lot of the tension that I'm sure most of us youth are feeling. So I wanted to say, thank you all for this opportunity, and I hope we can continue to have many others.
Thank you so much, Jaslyn. We really appreciate having you participate in SAC Youth Works, and thanks for making time tonight to come on, on the screen. Be brave, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm trying to find my cursor, folks, so... I apologize for my computer difficulties. Oops, sorry. Hang on one second. My apologies. I've got two screens going, and it's too much. Thank you, Jaslyn. Lindy went through these numbers, so I won't go back over the cohorts. Something that I did want to share is we had 77 career pathways that youth explored with their partner organizations. Youth participated in an online training platform that was shared across all organizations. There were other trainings that happened, but they logged 1,400-plus hours in that system learning general work-based skills. And 40 youth in our general work-based track actually went through the Mental Wellness Champions Training. So that's a 20-hour training that really digs deep into peer mental wellness and personal mental wellness. All right. And now I would love to hand it over to one of our partners, Kedrian Belcher-Harris, who is the CEO of Classy Inc. This is Kedrian pictured here, gathering supplies that the youth had collected for one of their service projects. So Kedrian, without further ado.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity. One of the great things about working with SAC Youth Works and Pro Youth Families is the training and the professionalism. We've been a nonprofit for about 13 years in Sacramento, but I have to say that this is probably, this past year has been one of our best years. And the reason why I say that is because we were, for the first time, able to obtain resources that were very valuable. To highlight some of the things that these youth have done, Jaslyn did an excellent job of describing her experience, but we taught virtual professionalism. We simply don't know where these young people are going to be who are currently in high school, so we're trying to provide them with skills that would still be fundamental once the pandemic is over. Now, what I mean by that is, is that we're huge on philanthropy and community service and youth-led opportunities. We had a huge Aiding the Homeless drive that supported all the council members' areas. We also did a drive for foster youth where kids wrote letters to the foster youth encouraging them and provided them with gifts and different things to keep them motivated. I'm not sure if you guys are aware or not, but the suicide rate amongst teenagers was already at an all-time high prior to the pandemic, and those numbers have been increasing since the pandemic. So being able to have things like this where they can give back, it really improves their esteem. In addition, they were also able to work with local officials. They were, they did videos for frontline workers. They had a panel discussion with Chief Han of the Police Department and talked about social injustice. All these things that they're being exposed to while only being able to sit in their home, they were able to address and to be able to productively talk about some of the issues that are affecting them. This has been an excellent program. We also have something that's a surprise for even Rachel, which is all of our youth created videos to let you know what this program meant to them. So we'll be forwarding those videos over. They've also wrote letters to let you know how this has impacted them in such a positive way. You know, we're not talking about much here. It was a 40-hour program, and it left the youth wanting more. So I can't thank Pro Youth Families enough in the city for affording us this opportunity, and I just thank you for this opportunity to share this.
I am really looking forward to those videos. You're going to make me cry. Thank you, Kedrian. And then I wanted to welcome a second partner, Dr. Eric Ravenberg with the HAWK Institute. We've had many substantive conversations about SAC Youth Works, and I said, you need to share this with council. So he was kind enough to join us this evening.
Well, thank you, Rachel, and good evening, colleagues. You know, Steinberg, distinguished city council members, it's always good to be here. I want to concentrate just on three things in the time that I have. First of all, I want to commend Pro Youth and Families. You know, a lot of people talk about collaboration. Collaboration, as we all know, is a byproduct of three things: communication, coordination, and cooperation. And what they've been able to do with all of the partner organizations is give us the resources, number one, but also to effectively manage and coordinate those resources. They've been invaluable as a training partner. They've been invaluable as thought leaders and working with all of us. And they've also connected all of us, too. Sometimes, community-based organizations kind of go their own separate ways, but this collaboration in particulars has provided a great intersection, created a sense of family. The second point that I want to underscore, and our student said it more eloquently than I could, that it gave students a voice and purpose and created a new sense of community in this digital environment. For HAWK, we offered three components within our two, our summer program and our fall program: career awareness, financial literacy, and entrepreneurship. And I can tell you that, given the challenges that we've had in this new COVID environment, it's forced to change our business model. And what we've done through these two programs, these two cohorts, is really refined our approach. We know now that our distributed learning is much more effective by what we've been able to put forth this past summer and fall. So we've refined our model. So Pro Youth and Families and SAC Youth Works has given us an opportunity to make that model even sharper. As a matter of fact, we're going to be rolling out that model as part of our main features for HAWK in the future. And then finally, there's some unintended consequences and positive attributes of this kind of a collaboration. I have been working with a gentleman named Andre. Let's just leave his last name out of it for right now. But he's been with HAWK for 10 years, since we started. And he's born, raised, still lives in Oak Park. And I've seen him move from participant to mentor to volunteer. And then we had the good fortune to place him to work with me in terms of working with the database for HAWK and working with Pro Youth. And I can tell you, this experience has helped him to excel professionally. So not only has this program benefited the students, it's benefited the staff, this professional development that he's had in this experience. We have now promoted Andre to be the chief operating officer for HAWK because of the experience that he's had through Pro Youth and Families and SAC Youth Works. We hope that you will continue this great program for it benefits not only the students, but the community. And we appreciate the wisdom that all of you have had and also in selecting somebody like Lindy Lane to just be on point on this. So my colleagues in Classy Inc., you know, even though they're down the hall from us, we may not see them much. I know her a lot better now and what she's doing and what we're all doing by virtue of this program. I really want to thank Pro Youth for bringing us all together, and thank you for your wisdom and leadership in funding this program.
Thank you so much, Dr. G. I really appreciate you coming on tonight to share that experience. There's so much more that we could talk about, but I know that time is short. I would just want to extend my gratitude, excuse me, to the city leaders. Pardon me, I'm just so choked up. I really appreciate your wisdom. I appreciate your partnership. It's been such a joy to, to just work on this program with the city team. And, you know, we're just so grateful to have been able to offer this pilot this fall and this summer. So thank you so very much. We'll open it up for questions if that's what we have time to do. I'm sure there's more that we could share, but we'll close it there.
Okay. Thank you very much for an excellent presentation, a thorough presentation. Do we have public testimony on the item? Madam Clerk?
I have no callers on this item.
Okay. And let's, let's hear from Councilmember Shanier to lead these efforts. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we have a long agenda, so I just want to make a couple of points if I can. First of all, you know, this would not have been possible had we not been working over the last number of years to build infrastructure and to have...
You're on mute, Jay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me start over. What I, what I said was, I'll be brief, because I know we have a long agenda tonight, but there's about three points I want to make here. One is, you know, as you all know, over the last couple of years, we've been building infrastructure within our department, YIPSE, and also in the city manager's office. And I want to thank Lindy for all of the work that she did. This could not have been put together as quickly as it, as it was with the quality that was inherent in it if we didn't have the personnel who were working on projects like this. So I want to thank Lindy and Mario and all the folks from YIPSE who participated in this. So that's number one, and we need to continue doing that, obviously. I also want to point out that, you know, this is a result of a collaboration between the city and Eric. It's nice to see you. Jaslyn, thank you very much, and Kedrian, to see you again after, I think, last week when you facilitated a group I was working on or working in. The collaborations that we have with community-based organizations that are closer to the ground, that know their, know their communities and can ramp up quickly and have the heart to do the right work, but not always the resources. So what we're able to do here is really pair the vision that the city was putting together with Pro Youth, which is an outstanding organization, and many other CBOs, as you saw, to be able to get something up and running this quickly and to be able to serve 1,400 young people in a, in a period where it's never been more important to bring them connections. I'm so excited that we're able to do this, and I know that we learned a lot, and we'll continue, and we'll be able to continue this program as we move forward. The third thing I want to point out, and this is really in light of some of the discussion that you all had at Budget and Audit Committee. When we talk about public safety, we passed a resolution last year that said we need to redefine public safety to include prevention services for young people. 1,400 young people in this program meetings, that 1,400 young people had a positive place to be with the ability to learn and gain the assets they need to be successful in school and in life. So I just want us to continue to remember that. And if we don't, I will continue to remind everyone as we move forward into our budget. This is what we need to be doing. This is the Sacramento that we want to build. These are not necessarily our leaders for the future. These are our leaders for today. And when we think about how articulate Jaslyn was, those are the young people that we need that will make the city great. So I'm going to just end it there, but I want to say thank you to everyone who participated in this program. I know we're going to keep it going. I know that we've talked about how we continue to fund it. But this is just one piece of the puzzle as we move forward on youth programming. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Thank you so much. Who else had? I had other members. I've got Pro Tem Ashby, Councilmember Laloe, Councilmember Valenzuela, and Councilmember Begata.
All right, Mayor, that's quite a lineup. And I know we're just still on our first item, but you can't have Rachel Minnick on, and I don't acknowledge how much I love Rachel Minnick. That's just not acceptable. She's my former chief of staff. I love Rachel Minnick. Everything she touches turns to gold. Also, she does fully understand the District One model for how we have engaged 1,000 youth per year in the youth advisory corp out there. And she knows how to do that, so she's a great lead for this. Councilmember Shanier has basically taken some COVID dollars, associated them with mental health around youth, and shown us what is possible. I think that wedding this program with the YAC program in District One and taking that program citywide... I think that wedding this program with the Yak program in District One and taking that program citywide is the right way to move forward for youth in the city. I think Jay and I have been saying that for quite some time. It's just a matter of the funding, but I think that the will is there now and, uh, I may have listened in on a bit of the budget meeting earlier today. It sounds like there may be some room for some youth programs like this, and I just think this is great work. No surprise that Rachel's involved. But, uh, happy and proud to support Jay, but when we bring it back to figure out how we're gonna fund these guys, let's also figure out how we take Yak, uh, citywide so that we can reach kids in, in every corner. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Laloey.
Thank you very much. Um, as, um, I just heard Miss, uh, Rachel, I, I don't know you, but, um, I guess I love you too. So based on the work that you have done and the, the time that you've spent on, on the youth. So I truly appreciate all your effort. Um, I just want to make sure I understand this, that every youth, um, has approximately forty hours that's with, with, it's within your organization, and we've seen this kind of, um, uh, great results. Um, do you feel that if the forty hours gets extended possibly for this, this group of youth on a regular basis, that maybe we see, you know, even further results? Or is forty hours enough, um, to have, uh, with these, uh, youth? And I, I love your program. Thank you so much, and, and that, that's pretty much my, my question.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those kind words, and, and, um, it's nice to see you on council. I think the forty hours, um, I think it really depends. Um, some youth are able to, uh, continue on with their organization and build upon what they've learned. Um, what we saw is that we have youth who are about fifteen, is the fifteen and a half is the average age. So they're really in those early skill-building stages, and a lot of times they can really benefit from more time um, with those adult mentors that they've developed these really strong relationships with. And in other cases, what we see is they're ready to move on to other workforce development, uh, opportunities within the city um, or other opportunities. But, um, that's kind of the next thing that I'm thinking about is how can we build those bridges so that we can connect what, um, young people are doing in SAC Youth Works and then build them into that next opportunity, uh, with other programs within the city. So I think it depends on the youth, and that's really where we trust our provider network, is they know these youth. They've developed these relationships with them, and they're the ones that really clearly can assess, uh, where youth are and what they need.
If, if I can add something really quickly, um, uh, Councilmember, forty hours is not nearly enough. Forty hours is a starting point. We, we need programs and services to be established for young people from the time they're in early elementary school through high school and beyond that. Um, we need to think holistically about that, about what, what our young people need to be successful. And there's a whole range of services and programs that they need. This is just a starting point that we threw some money together from CARES, um, that Rachel and her folks did a great job putting something together, and again, thanking Lindy. Um, but we need to do a lot more.
I appreciate it, and, uh, again, thank you so much for your hard work and your organization had me at youth. So, um, I'm, I'm all in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember.
All right, I've got Councilmember Valenzuela, Gata, then Jennings, and I have one quick comment. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for this presentation. I think especially for those of us who are newer on the council. It's just so nice to get this update and to understand what's going on. And as someone who personally's dad voluntold her to go out and get involved in the community when she was thirteen years old, I can personally attest to just how critical, like, all these different range of leadership opportunities and mentorship and just all the things that you're doing and that range of services to meet youth where they're at. Um, who knows, maybe they'll all start running for council someday. Wouldn't that be great? Uh, but I do want to say, just, um, editorializing a little bit, that, I mean, I mean, we all know COVID just exposed the inequities and the vulnerabilities that were already there. Um, and so as we were triaging this crisis and this funding was a part of that, I think I'm hopeful that this is something we continue to do, because just when COVID ends doesn't mean that the vulnerabilities go away. It doesn't mean that those inequities go away. And I think we found something here that really shows us what works, that we can build on and hopefully, um, really meaningfully invest in. And I, uh, to eavesdrop in a little bit on the budget committee meeting earlier, and I'm excited about the conversations that are happening, because I think we have a way to really come out of this crisis and not go back into business as usual or spending as usual. Um, one of the new Biden appointees to the budget office said, "One of my favorite quotes is always, 'Don't tell me what you value. Show me your budget and I will tell you what you value based on where your money goes.'" And this to me is something that I value, and I'm really looking forward to making that real in the budget this year. So thank you all again for the time, um, and for all that you're doing in the community.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you. I, could I add just one thing really quickly to, um, something that COVID exposed um, was opportunity and something that we saw in our data that was really unexpected was youth. The, the, we, we asked about connection and the area where they showed the most, um, change in their sense of connection was their sense of connection to their peers. Um, because they were able to connect with young people on all these Zoom, you know, virtual spaces, and they got to know young people that they would have never gotten to know um, had we just been doing things the old way. So I think this, uh, opportunity to break down some of the neighborhood barriers and some of the, um, you know, oh, you go to this school or you're, you know, you're in this neighborhood, a lot of those things are getting blown up um, in SAC Youth Works, because young people are engaging all across the city, um, with young people that they would have never met before. So I really appreciated seeing those numbers grow. We just, we didn't expect that, and we didn't do that on purpose, but it just was a happy, um, positive impact.
Thank you, Rachel. I just want to make, we need to get to the members, and we got, uh, a long agenda tonight. I appreciate it very much. Go, go ahead. Uh, Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, um, I'll, I'll just keep it short here. First of all, big thank you and shout out to all the youth here. I mean, the, the perseverance and the resiliency right now, it just, it, it gives me a, a bright hope for the future. Um, and so, uh, you know, uh, you know, we really appreciate your willingness to be part of this and be here at the council. Uh, right off the bat, I want to thank Lindy Lane. Thank you, Lindy. You know, appreciate all the work you've done here. We've got great staff. And also to my neighbor Rachel, you know, Talat Village representing here. And, uh, uh, you know, the consistently, you know, always fighting for youth, and not only that, but also big on literacy and making sure that we're hitting, you know, addressing those of our, uh, families and kids who, who during the summer, even before COVID, were falling way behind. And now COVID, it's like this, the longest type of break that we've ever had that is exacerbated. We already, already knew these issues were happening with, uh, with, uh, our youth that don't have as many resources. Um, the data was there. So thank you again for this. Um, and then, uh, finally, you know, I just, I have to, I couldn't, you, you know, uh, speak without thanking Dr. Eric Ravenberg. Um, you know, Dr. Eric Ravenberg, I've had the opportunity to know him for twenty-five years, working with, um, every single youth who was, would have been a statistic of not succeeding, not making it to college, falling out of college, even getting into college and then not making it through. And, uh, you know, you impact me at SAC State so much. Appreciate it. You, many of us all remember coming to see you, Dr. G, you know, uh, uh, back then. And, uh, and, you know, the fact that you're still, uh, giving here and promoting and, and, uh, and pushing this issue and sharing your talent. Really appreciate it. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, uh, Jay, uh, most of all for taking the initiative, uh, on this and thinking about how to put this forward. So thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Councilman Jennings?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor. Um, you know, in two weeks, we get to see, uh, the Super Bowl, uh, which is all football-related, but tonight we got to see the Super Bowl stars of Sacramento and Jay and Rachel and Lindy and Eric, uh, Ravenberg and, uh, I'm pronouncing it wrong. I know I'm gonna beat it up, but, uh, Kendria? Close? Okay, uh, and Jaslyn and just so many others that all have been involved in just such an incredible program with statistics. And Jay, I thank you for your leadership in making this happen. I heard somebody say that, you know, you have the heart to do this work, but many times you don't have the resources. And you see what happens when you have the resources and the impact that you can make in the lives of kids. This time we touched fourteen hundred kids. Tomorrow, we should be able to reach five thousand. The next day, ten thousand, and on and on and on. And we've got to get to every corner of Sacramento to make sure we touch the lives of kids who are dealing with low self-esteem, who are dealing with two or more risk factors, who are dealing with issues in their home that are not gonna allow them to be successful. So Jay, you built the model. You've got a pro, program out there that we can all build on. And whatever you need in order to make this, to do this more, to do it more often, to have it go year-round, I'm a hundred and fifty percent behind you.
Thank you. My question, um, first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you, Councilman Shneer. Leadership is always, you know, Lindy, um, a, and to Rachel and, you know, everybody's so involved in this. I want to ask you this. How many more young people could you serve in this specific program if there was greater capacity?
Lindy, do you want to take this one?
No, Mayor, you just took my question.
I know, I saw your hand raised, Mike.
I didn't see your hand raised.
Not good. We're on, we're, we're, it's, it's all right. I know we have a lot of, lot tonight, so.
Well, I'm gonna make a point in a minute, once I get the answer.
Mr. Mayor, with, by, by more capacity, do you mean resources? Do you mean fun?
If you had the resources, how many kids could you serve in this program, if you had the resources?
If we had the resources, I think that number, I mean, it, it could be whatever.
Based on?
The resources.
Based on the need.
Based on the need.
I, I was actually gonna ask, what's the dollar amount, um, to operate this program a, and the touch that you've been able to reach with the CARES dollar? It, I think that'd be good to know as we move forward a budget conversation, so.
One point three million, how, how many kids?
Yeah.
Almost a thousand.
Okay, and just, man, how many, let's see, how many kids, um, qualify for free and reduced lunch in our schools who are the appropriate, who, who are the, who are the?
Seventy-five percent.
Okay, so we're talking thousands. I mean, you could, you could times this, times ten, probably pretty easily, couldn't you?
Yes.
I would agree, and we, we didn't promote it at all, and we had a waitlist of three hundred youth without promoting it at all.
So I don't want to be a downer here, because this is a really happy, uh, occasion to celebrate, but I do think it is really relevant to say this afternoon, we had a very important discussion on the budget. It isn't about any particular item. It's just in general. Um, are, is it our priority to bring this kind of innovative program to capacity? Or is it a matter of taking whatever extra dollars we have after we do the other things and then finding ways to expand this the best that we can? Budgets are a statement of values, and budgets are also choices. And so, you know, I'm not gonna get back to the, I'm not, I, I believe we need strong public safety and, and including law enforcement and police. This is as relevant in terms of the future of our city. If we're gonna build communities, well, then we have to take that question as seriously as we take the other question. It's not philosophical or ideological to me, because I actually think we need the public safety on the, on the traditional side. My partner's a momma college, but what are we doing to make sure in the budget, we're expanding this? Be, because, you know, we may get Biden money. Probably will, one more tranche, but that'll be one time. Okay? Here's our opportunities. I just put forward that challenge, uh, to all of us here, that this needs to matter as much, not just when we have extra money. Choices. Thanks. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right, let us go back now to item one, which is the Citywide, uh, Racial Equity Initiative. Who is, who is, uh, presenting on this?
Mr. Mayor, I think Jay, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Shneer is gonna kick us off here on this one today.
Yeah, so we had a discussion. All the days blend together here, but a few weeks ago, um, talking about bringing forward a resolution uh, for the council to look at social inequities and to look at systemic racism. And, uh, that's what we have for you here today. Um, Councilmember Gera and I and Councilmember Harris have been working on this. Um, I may or may not be the right face to bring this forward, but I think collectively we, we all are. Um, you know, I, I, I just want to say a couple things again, because I know we have a long agenda tonight. First of all, we're not, we're not creating something new here. There's a lot of work that's been going on in the city for at least eighteen months, if not longer. Um, and I want to, I want to, uh, thank Ami, uh, Barnes for the work that she's done and Laney as well. Uh, and the folks that they've been working with across many departments, uh, within the city. And also for many of the council members for really demanding that we take a look at this. Uh, Larry Carr was one, Angelique, uh, was one, when we were, we were talking about diversity of the people who work for our city and how they reflect the population as a whole. Um, so number one is, this is work that needs to continue and needs to expand. Um, we, I think that we, we really need to look at the working group that we want to put together, which will be kind of a public-private partnership. It will have, uh, folks from the city as well as community leaders, and maybe not only our usual suspects, but we really need to reach out and make sure that we have, uh, folks who care about this, but also our leaders in their own communities, their own neighborhoods, that can help lead this work. Um, you know, we talk a lot about trust or lack of trust. We talk about accountability and we talk about responsibility. I think our responsibility as a council is really to set the parameters, uh, create the venue that this work can go on. Because it's not, it's not a single initiative, and if we look at it that way, it will be marginalized uh, beyond the parameters of what we do every day. This is work about how we do business as a city, how we operate as a city, and needs to really permeate everything we do. So some of the things, you know, that we're, we're looking at is what's the tool that we can use? Uh, so we look as, through a racial equity lens when we do our budget. Um, and I'm really excited about the conversation we just had with, with Sacramento Youth Works. Um, because those are the young people that we're doing this for, and, and we thought that would be a good lead into this conversation today. So I, I'm excited to continue to move this forward. It's a tremendous amount of work. I know that we're gonna get some more support for Ami, uh, in the work that she's doing. She can't do this by herself. Lynette Hall, um, also will get more support in, in helping to do outreach into the community. Um, but I think it's really important for us to support in any way we can the working group that we're putting together. Um, and, and I'll let Lynette or Ami talk about that later, uh, if they choose. Um, but to have that leadership grounded in, uh, our community as well as the council, as well as the city, so that we can work collaboratively, um, towards the goals that we've set up. And so, uh, Councilmember Gera, let me turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you, Jay, and I think it's important to, one, acknowledge that, uh, that there has been a lot of work here done. Ami Barnes has done an extensive amount of work, and it's been also internally with, uh, our organizations within our own staff, like the African-American Leadership Council, the Latino stakeholders, and, uh, the organizations like the Sacrum Women and Girls and Advancement Coalition to help us drive some of our internal work. Uh, and a lot of what came out about in our work, in our first, uh, working discussions was that as we move forward, how can you continue to wo, work on these issues if we haven't even recognized and acknowledged as a government entity the historic, uh, and current harms that have occurred? Um, and even today, the President Biden issued a memorandum of, to that effect. So, you know, I, I feel, I feel, uh, that we're ahead of, of the federal government and the fact that we'd already been working on this, but the fact that the Fed, that the, that President Biden had put that forward together. Uh, one of the important things about this resolution is that this is a draft that's just based on historical facts. But that is not enough. It has to be a community-centered, driven, uh, process here. And, uh, so, uh, well, the, the two major asks that we're asking here, and I want to then pa, pass it over to our staff here, is one, uh, the reaffirming the council's commitment to moving forward with the resolution that acknowledges those not only historic but current harms from structural uh, in systemic, uh, racism that's occurred over decades of our city's existence. But two, also directing the city manager to appropriate the appropriate. But two, also directing the city manager to appropriate the appropriate staff support and financial support to do the, the outreach that is needed to actually have a community-driven resolution. It can't just be this draft resolution. That this, and this is comes from a recommendation from Reese Forward, from our cohort, Garrett Cohorts, and also from our own community and leaders that, and experts that have been part of our informative process here. You know, we've all experienced this in many different ways. I know I experienced it personally, but, but what is in the draft resolution is a series of facts. It needs to be those centered on what, what it means for Sacramento. It has to be genuine from that. So to that, I want to pass it over to our staff.
Actually, really quickly, Eric, we would both be remiss if we didn't mention Kelly Rivas, Coy Sater, and Allison Jo, staff in the mayor's office, Eric's office, and my office, who have really been working with Ami and Lynette to drive this forward. So want to.
No, that's true. And, and I want to recognize also Jasleen from, from Senator, Councilmember Harris's office. And, you know, we really appreciate all of the staff work that's gone into this. This is on top of the, the regular work that we do of responding to our constituents and preparing for our council. They've committed to so many hours to this.
And, and this needs to become the regular work we do, right?
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, that's, that's it for the two of us.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a, just a quick correction. Eric, you misspoke. It's not Jasleen, it's Jocelyn from.
Oh, Jocelyn, sorry.
Listen, Jocelyn, Jocelyn is a force to be reckoned with, so don't mess up her name.
It's Jocelyn. So we'll pass this over to our, our staff.
Yeah, go, go ahead. Who am I turning it over to now? To?
I'll be happy to speak. Thank you and good evening, council members. I do want to thank the council member staff, Coy, Jocelyn, and Allison, Laney, ACM, from the city manager's office. This is such an important initiative. The initiative and the work that you talked about with the youth, this can touch on that. The work of a racial equity initiative can touch on homelessness. It can touch on rent control. It can touch on climate change. It could touch on so many different things. And by signaling to the community that we value and embed race and racial equity lens, and again, remember, racial equity means we center race, but it doesn't mean that we ignore the other identities that are marginalized, from gender to gender expression, to gender identity, to veteran status, to sexual orientation, to different abilities. It means that we are centering this in our work, in our decision-making. So while the staff report and the resolution really does kind of speak to, you know, centering this work, looking at the city manager's office, what I would implore you to do as a council is to really think about how it is that this work centers in your work day to day? And what resources and how you can organize yourselves as a city council to move and advance this forward? A lot of internal work is happening. We've launched our Race, Gender, and Equity Action Plan. Our departments, I've met with three of them in the last two days. We are developing equity core teams to talk about workforce equity and workforce diversity over the next year and five years. But at the same time, what I would love to see and support you all in, and I think I, I, I'm going to say to speak on behalf of all of the staff, is how can we support the mayor council to embed this work into your decision-making? So that it is really, truly an outcome, and it's measured, and it's understandable, and it's transparent to your different districts. The other thing is, is that I think that the Racial Equity Initiative has the potential, it's, you know, it's iterative. It's dynamic. It's, we might take thirty steps back to make a hundred steps forward. But at the same time, it will touch all of your districts so that we can see really and look at Sacramento as a whole, not as potential districts, but as a whole in developing all thriving, developing, growing communities for all Sacramentoans in the region. And I think we could become a leader, and I think we're at the, at the pinnacle of that, to do that right now with all of the work that is happening out of the city manager's office. So how can we embed this work in the work that you do with your staff day to day? That's really a, a, a major point. The other major point is how do we look at our systems and our structures around community engagement? And I would leave it to our community engagement specialists from across the city. But how do we make this community-centered? How do we make it community-shared? How do we make it community-owned? How do we make it community-driven? And I really think that's the work that we have the, the great potential to do in this next year as we develop this racial equity initiative. And I'll, I'll leave it there. And, and thank you for listening.
Of course. Thank you. I love the way you put it, to embed this in every bit of decision-making that the city leadership is called upon to do.
But we're asking, we're asking for two things tonight, Mr. Mayor. The first is that council members and their staffs take a look at the resolution that's included in this item. If you have comments on it, you can get them to either Ami or Lynette or Allison or Coy or Jocelyn. Any one of them, I think, would be fine. And then, two, provide some direction to the city manager, which I know he's doing already. But provide formal direction to the city manager to provide the support and resources necessary to carry out this initiative.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I think we have Lynette Hall who's.
Lynette Hall, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I just really wanted to reiterate how there's always different levels of engagement as we go out on different projects and initiatives. And with this project, this has to be a hybrid initiative when it comes to engaging with the community. And what I mean by that is we have to collaborate with the community and empower them on this. And so this really has to be something that is led by the community. We always don't, we don't often always have the community lead the conversations. They might partner and collaborate, but this is something that really has to be led by the community in partnership with the council. And so, one of the recommendations is that, and we went back and forth on whether or not to even present a draft resolution, because what we didn't want people to think is that we know what it is that community wants and how it has impacted them. And so, although this is just kind of the bare bones, we need to have a working session. We need to establish some public working sessions to really take into account how community sees this and create some of what success looks like. What are some of the benchmarks and the goals that we want to say, you know, at the end of this process, it's better? And so, I can't reiterate enough how important it is that these working sessions should be done in public where we can take the input. We know that each group that's affected by racism is not monolithic. And so we want to make sure that we have a broad group of folks really chiming in to really make this work make some changes. And it's, it's uncomfortable. It's something that's uncomfortable. But if we're not uncomfortable, we're not moving forward. And so we have to at least be willing to get a little bit uncomfortable so that we can all be comfortable. And so that's kind of how this work is. And we want to lean on some of the other cities that have already done this work. And so I'm here to support our council and the community. And I thank you.
Thank you so much, Lynette. So let me ask, is there public testimony? Because I know we want to get around to other council members to provide the input that Councilmember Chenier, Vice Mayor Chenier mentioned a moment ago. Is there public testimony?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have eleven callers.
Let's hear from the public, please.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Maki. I am with Mong Innovating Politics and the Sacramento API Regional Network. I also reside in District Four. Thank you, Councilmember Chenier and Councilmember Gera for this initiative. This is a great step in bringing our city together by addressing systemic racism and moving towards being an anti-racist city. I'm calling you today to urge you all to expand the narrative to also include Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities and intersecting identities, including LGBTQ plus, youth, persons with disabilities, and refugees as well. The city needs to provide disaggregated data for Asian-American and Pacific Islander subgroups. Each group has their own struggle with disparities and racial inequities and also needs to be addressed if we are to move forward together as a city to reach collective racial equity. Please include these recommendations to the resolution. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello and good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Diane. I am representing youth with Mong Innovating Politics. I reside in District Six. I'm here today to cheer and to ask you all to include further amendments that help Asian-American subgroups and Pacific Islander communities who are often made invisible to be invisible in this, to be visible in this initiative and to be recognized and especially included as part of the city and communities' plans for racial equity. On my call for action, I urge you to add disaggregated data collection and reporting on Asian-American and Pacific Islander subgroups. I urge you to revise the action benchmark and timeline to reflect a more robust, innovative, culturally and logistically scaled outreach strategy that reflects communities most impacted by racial disparities. Finally, I urge you sincerely to expand our shared collective narrative to reflect Sacramento's diverse Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. I believe in the Racial Equity Initiative with further amendments. And by extending our collective narrative, we can actively address systemic racism together. We can by engaging in anti-racism work and practices. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Oh, okay. Hello, Mayor and Councilmember. My name is George Tong, among you from Parent United. Hi, Pooh. I'm calling to make a comment on item two regarding the city's new initiative on racial equity. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Councilmember Jay Chenier and Eric Gera for bringing on a much-needed initiative to address the issues of systemic racism and take a step towards racial equity. You know, I who support these efforts wholeheartedly. And with this support, I'm also here today to ask for your commitment and ensuring that racial equity for you, that you propose will fully incorporate and include the voices and representation of all our communal colors, such as our diverse API communities, which includes the Mong, the Miin, the Laotian, and the Thai, and Southeast Asian community and Pacific Islander people who are often forgotten or brushed to the side in conversation around race and diversity. To include these diverse API communities, I'm here to urge that committees, you as the committee and the city, push forth with efforts in disaggreging data on API groups, developing a data-driven racial equity action plan that could better speak to the needs of our diverse API community. Today, I come here not just as a COVID-19 program lead for HIPO, you know, working tirelessly in collaboration with many community organizations throughout Sacramento County to ensure that the people of disadvantaged community are safe and have the resources they need to make it through the pandemic. But I'm also here as a researcher with Husey Davis and a postgraduate or master in the Public Health Program, where seeing how the effect of disaggreging data on the API community has made breakthroughs in public health. And to better and made us understand better the gruesome realities of how APR is simply not a monolith. Research suggests that AP, Asian-Americans aggregated together are considered the second lowest racial ethnic group in regards to pregnancy, like diabetes, where, you know, non-Hispanic white being the lowest in prevalence of diabetes for all. But more research done now would.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I just want to end with saying thank you, you know, Mr. Mayor and the council members were doing such a great job. And, you know, I really hope that you will push forward this activity for API.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Luisa Lovulo with TOFA, and I live in South Sacramento in District Eight. And we have a very big Pacific Islander community here in South Sacramento. And you mentioned a word, collaboration. And so I just wanted to know how we can find representation and collaboration for our Pacific Islander community? You mentioned two demographics that are often mentioned, which is the Black and Latino community, but a demographic that isn't often mentioned, if at all, is the Pacific Islander community. How can we get outreach and representation to build that trust between the PI community when we're rarely looked at? You will find communication in different languages like Spanish and Chinese and other languages, but never or rarely in Tong and Samoan, Fijian, and Native Hawaiian. And I know that the PI community has low turnout to community events and meetings, but that's because it's hard to get them to show up when the focus is rarely on people that look like us.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Adri O'Quoro, and I am the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. Acknowledging historic and systemic racism is an important part of bringing healing to the entire community, but it must be coupled with specific actions. The government systems that created and perpetuated generational poverty must act collectively to dismantle those same systems. In our city, state, and nation, community leaders from Black, Indigenous, Latinx, and various Asian and Pacific Islander groups have fought tirelessly and won several battles in the fight to address systemic racism. We must make sure community leaders are present as we create comprehensive plans to address systemic racism. Racism in housing in Sacramento is present and documented. In order to address the inequity that we see every day in the demographics of individuals and families experiencing housing insecurity in our streets, we need specific qualities, policies that affirmatively further fair housing. Affirmatively furthering fair housing requires providing housing in specific areas of opportunity as well as transforming areas with high segregation and poverty into areas of opportunity as required under California state law. To begin this work, the 2040 General Plan, the 2021 Housing Element, the Environmental Justice Element, and various city-specific plans must have programs and policies that promote homeownership opportunities for Latinx, Black, Indigenous, communities of color, affordable housing, economic and educational opportunities, ensuring that these things are available for all young people. We must aggressively seek funding opportunities and institute best practices for becoming an anti-racist city. In the city of Los Angeles, they recently named a chief equity officer in their planning department to address implicit bias in city planning policies. Pasal Roble is currently drafting the first-ever equity strategic transformative framework for this city. Now is the time to act, and we are headed in the right direction.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Sacramento Housing Alliance is here to support the city in becoming a model anti-racist city in our region and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Paco Torres, and I'm a resident of District Four. I am also speaking in my capacity as the president of the API Young Democrats of Sacramento County. We want to thank the authors of this resolution, especially Councilmember Getta, for ensuring that our city is engaged in this all-important discussion of equity and structural racism. While our club has not yet taken an official position on the resolution, we are heartened by the direction its language is taking. If we may make one suggestion regarding the substance of the resolution, we believe it would be important to add another whereas clause discussing the current and ongoing discrimination faced by our Asian Pacific Islander community. Our API community is diverse, and each segment of it faces unique challenges. However, our community has universally faced discrimination and acts of violence over the past year due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. In general, we believe it is vital that this resolution acknowledges the inequities and discrimination faced by our API community. For these reasons, we support moving the resolution forward in the process and for further outreach to get community input on this language. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the authors for doing this important work.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Maxie Zhang, and I'm with Mong Innovating Politics. I live in District Seven. On behalf of Mong Innovating Politics, I would like to express my sincere appreciation. Seven. On behalf of Mongue Innovating Politics, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for the introduction of a citywide racial equity initiative and overdue, uh, but critical step towards making the city of Sacramento more prosperous and healthy city for all residents. We would like to thank councilmembers Sinear and Geta for spearheading this effort and staff for their work in getting the initiative to this point. While we support the REI, um, in the letter that we sent, uh, earlier to city council members, we made three recommendations, and the one we really want to emphasize on, um, tonight is really measuring equity through disaggregated data for Asian American subgroups and Pacific Islander residents. I've served as the co-chair of the API Subcommittee for the Sacramento, uh, County Census for over two years. We understand firsthand how much work, time, trust, and infrastructure was needed in order to reach the hardest-to-count populations in the diverse Asian American Pacific Islander communities in Sacramento that are most impacted by these racial disparities disparities. The disaggregated data will allow the council and staff to document, analyze, and hold accountable its efforts towards greater racial equity. More critically, the absence or omission of disaggregated data undermines the stated equity goals and invisibilizes thousands of residents facing significant health, socioeconomic, and educational disparities. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Leslie Vaya, and I'm a resident of District Eight, um, and a member of TOFA. Um, I support all the recommendations to include Asian and Pacific Islander data, um, more specifically for Pacific Islander data, as we are overshadowed by our Asian counterparts and, um, obstacles and things of such nature that affect our Asian counterparts do not affect us, and we have a unique set of circumstances that I feel we need to be looked into if our community is going to be helped as well. Um, to go on further, I'm also a mother of eight kids who were all once in the Sacramento City Unified District, and I work with youth across many districts throughout Calif, uh, throughout Sacramento. And the one thing that I can say is that education is not created equal here. Um, I had to remove my kids from public school, from the Sacramento Unified School District, uh, because it wasn't prepared, and they were behind, although their grades reflected, they were doing excellent. We put one of my older kids into private school, and they found out that they were inadequate, adequately prepared. So I strong strongly recommend that we look into education and that we go further, because we can include the community, but the problem is it's always the same people from those communities that come to the forefront to represent, um, the community. We need to go deeper into the homes, and I know that sounds a very probably utopian, but we need to go further into the homes and find out what obstacles, what struggles they're facing, because I am sure, I sure, I'm sure, um, that it's a lot that we don't know, and if we don't know, we can't represent them. Um, I speak especially on this point for the Pacific Islander community, as we have many struggles and obstacles that we cannot find resources for. Much of that has to do with the fact that we're not counted, or we haven't been counted in census in years past. Um, there's no statistical and statistical evidence, research, data to help support, um, the needs that our community has. And so I just urge that when we, um, look to community involvement, that we go
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Um, my final comment would be is that we try to dig deeper, be, and be on the surface, to try to pull more, as much information as we can from the households in our community to find out what obstacles and struggles really affect them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Greetings, uh, Mayor Steinberg and city council. My name is Gary Simon. I am the Executive Director of Sacramento Juneteenth Incorporated. I'd like to first commend you, Mayor Steinberg and the council, for the creations of several new departments, uh, beginning with the Office of Diversity, uh, followed by the Police Accountability Commission, as well as the Community Engagement, uh, Department led by Lynette Hall, who actually, uh, asked me to, uh, attend tonight. Uh, but Mayor Steinberg, I want to, first of all, uh, commend you for your handling of the Stefan Clark incidents, uh, several racially charged incidents that have happened in Sacramento over the years, uh, beginning with the Stefan Clark, and then the BLM and social justice protests. You did a great job with handling that, and your, your messages were well received. Uh, in looking at the initiative, I am in full support of the racial equity initiative. Uh, however, I want to, I think that a couple items need to be included. Uh, hiring within the city of Sacramento, uh, I think that the minority hiring with the city of Sacramento should be included. I know that it's a part of the Office of Diversity's report of April 2019, but specifically, uh, African-American hiring with the city of Sacramento, I think that should be part of the initiatives, uh, one of their, uh, points of interest as well. Uh, and also in addition to that, I think that there should be , uh, consequences for those individuals and/or corporations and city departments that violate, uh, the mandates of this initiative. So we must identify some criteria of what violates, uh, this mandate as well. Uh, in regards to criminal justice reform, I think that Sacramento should take the forefront on trying to eliminate this absolute amenity that, uh, provides to, uh,
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Prosecutors, as well as the qualified and meaningful police officers, should also be included in this initiative.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I'm GoEia Yang, and I grew up in District Two and now a resident of District One. Thank you to councilmember Sinear, Gera, and all of the staff, as well as the rest of the city council, for your efforts to move Sacramento in the right direction towards racial justice and ensuring that this process is transparent and driven by the community. I'm calling to urge you to include three additional items into the resolution. One is to acknowledge the racist and unjust incarceration of Japanese Americans during World War II, stripping Japanese American families from their homes and livelihoods throughout the West Coast, including families in Sacramento and into the prison camps. Two is acknowledging the racist efforts of the Sacramento Police Department from the 1990s until recently with the creation of the Asian Gang Task Force, which targeted specifically Southeast Asian boys and young men, and therefore causing further trauma to the community and increasing mass incarceration of Southeast Asian Americans. Instead of creating appropriate and necessary youth and young adult programs to engage this population to have the resources and skills to dream and thrive. And third is, in order to uphold the city's equity goals, we must acknowledge the diversity and the stark disparities that exist within the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities in Sacramento. The city must require the disaggregation of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders, including health, education, and employment data in order to truly see the needs and challenges that various Asian Americans and Pacific Islander ethnic communities face, especially the Mong, Miin, Lao, Vietnamese, South Asian, Samoan, Tongan, and Philippine communities. Too often, our Asian American Pacific Islander issues go invisible and therefore less under addressed. We can change that, and I hope that this process will ensure all communities of color in Sacramento have equitable
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Tamiko Heim. I'm with District Five. I'm calling to say, first of all, I'm encouraged by the statements that were made by staff in regard to this resolution. I look forward to see where this resolution goes, and one of the things in particular that I really, that really touched me is how we should have this work center some of our decision-making. And so, as I said, my name is Tamiko Heim. I'm actually one of the commissioners for Active Transportation, and I wanted to bring up that that is something that Active Transportation does as we review projects that come across our commission. And I wanted to make sure that we are looking at community building, and as far as equity is concerned, community building in parks, sidewalks, crosswalks, and all these things. I know there have been neighborhoods that have had plans that come across our desks in more affluent neighborhoods that want to be updated, but we still have districts that don't even have sidewalks and adequate lighting. So I really want to encourage you guys to look into these plans as they come across your desks and come across Active Transit, Active Transportation Commission, and I look forward to how this, how one in particular thing comes into play, and that's establishing benchmarks as this, as this resolution goes forward. So thank you again, and, um, I look forward to seeing this grow.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. And Mayor and council, this is our final speaker on this item. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Yes, this is Lambert, uh, to the Bay and Back Cheesecakes from Del Paso Heights. I would like to say thank you to Mr. Sinear and Mr. Gera for, uh, bringing this to the forefront. As I study the comments, uh, from the Asian community and the Pacific Islanders, I would, I would suggest that they do have pretty good representation. Her name is Pat Fong of the Asian Chamber of Commerce. She's very committed to the Asian community, and also the Asian Pacific Islanders. They have another chamber that, um, uh, is very representative of their community. And how do I know? Because our cheesecakes were featured at both of those chambers throughout the years. So I would suggest you contact them, because they are tremendous advocates, especially Pat Fong. Um, as far as, um, what I'm trying to get accomplished, I'm glad to see this, because I believe we're going to be the litmus test for all races, but specifically, uh, the people of color in Del Paso Heights, which has, uh, a collection of Pacific Islanders, uh, Mong, Miins. I have some friends that are big fans of our cheesecakes. Shout out to Jimmy's in Del Paso Heights, which we patronize. Black people patronize Jimmy's. And it's a Mong-owned, uh, business. So it's, it's not about black people discriminating. So, um, my focus now is, I'm glad to hear that, but I, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Gera and Mr. Sinear. It's ironic that it wasn't brought forward by the only black person on the city council. That's peculiar to me. But I wanted to just say thank you, and hopefully you guys get together and fund, uh, a company that has gone viral.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, fund to the Bay and Back Cheesecakes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers on this item.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Um, let's go back to the members here who have not had a chance to speak. Now, the resolution is not the final language of what a racial and ethnic lens would look like. It is a statement of principles, and it is direction, uh, for this work to continue. That's where I would direct my comments in a couple of minutes, but I want to hear from, uh, other members here in a moment. I want to hear now. Uh, Pro Tem Ashby, go ahead. I'm just, I'm going down the line here, so sorry.
Sure. No, no problem, uh, Mayor. So, um, I guess, you know, my initial comment is, first of all, thank you to all the people who've worked on it to this point. It's obviously, if it feels like a start, I think that's because it's supposed to feel like a start, or at least maybe that's what I'm struggling with a little bit. But I, I think probably Lynette and maybe the person from SAC Housing Alliance are where I'm at, or where my mind is at, which is that we really need to engage the community here now. And I would, Mayor, I can't remember, is this like a, did you assign the council members to this, or how did that happen? I don't remember.
Um, I don't remember. You know, this came up in the context of, um, of, of the aftermath of the George Floyd killing, and there was a lot of discussion, and I, I believe that, uh, either I asked, or Councilmember Sinear and Gera stepped up and volunteered to, to lead the effort here.
Okay, it's great. But at this point, we should probably take advantage of the extremely diverse council that we have, including, you know, having three women and members of the Mong community and Latinx community and African-American community and, uh, you know, Indian community here, like whatever we, I don't know, Sean, I don't even know enough yet to know what your background is. I need to, I should ask, I shouldn't guess. But whatever, we have, we have a wealth of folks here with the different backgrounds, and maybe we can find some ways for all of us to participate beyond giving feedback on the resolution. And I heard a lot of callers mention gender. I heard a lot of callers mention LGBTQ and intersectionality, and of course, there was a plethora of callers asking for either Asian API or Pacific Islander, or a combination of the three to be included. And I'm sure for every, you know, we have such a diverse city, which is amazing, uh, and one of my favorite things about living in Sacramento. But for every group that we go out to, there's going to be another group that wants to be included, and we need to try to reach them all, as many as we can. And so I guess what I'm thinking, Mayor, is how do we, how do we help, right? How do we take the talents of the council? How do we take, you know, uh, my vein, for example, and reach the Mong community and make sure everyone in District Eight gets to be included, and District One, and all the districts? So, you know, uh, I don't have the answer. And my guess would be through city staff, probably through Lynette's office, uh, working with the individual council members to try to get outreach into their communities, and then, first of all, their communities they represent, and then, second of all, the communities that they, um, are deeply connected to and can, can help bring forward and engage in this process. And, uh, you know, for me, always on this stuff, I'm always just looking for the action item. And so I really, I, I don't want to skip over the important work of, you know, the mission statement and the vision and the goal, but I am anxious to get to, what are we going to do about it? How do we apply the lens? And how does the application of a lens help lift up women and people of color and people who've traditionally been left behind in our city? Acknowledging it is a great first step, but then how do we bridge, what, what is our next action step going to be, which I think is the point we're at now. So I'll be, I'll be here and interested in helping, uh, councilmember Sinear, I think is a great leader of the project, but I'm happy to stand behind him and help him. I just, it's more of a, Jay, how can I help you sort of comment? Let me know how to do that, and, you know, without breaking any brown acts, if it's sending Lynette my way, do it. Love working with her. Happy to do that. Happy to engage my community and really proud to have such a diverse council that I think can also help and engage too.
Um, as I, I want to answer this question, because I think it, it's an opportunity. First of all, you know, this is an entrepreneurial council, and kudos to councilmembers Geta and Sinear for, uh, taking the lead. But it is, it is a launch. That's all it is. It's the beginning, not the end. The truth is, the community has been demanding this for a long time. Maybe not explicitly until the last half of 2020, but the community's been demanding this. This is what all of our work has been about in terms of inclusion, in terms of investment strategies, in terms of, uh, uh, all of the, the issues that we grapple with. And so I, I think the thanks goes to the members, but the thanks also goes to the community for their engagement around, for years around this, their patience with the process, and their willingness to help the city. And so the way to do this, I think, just as we're doing with the Homeless Master Plan, where all the members are going out to their community and engaging their communities with the help of the city staff and leadership, I think everyone should do that and then come back with the input so that we make sure that we do reflect, um, the, the, the full diversity of our community. But this is the beginning, not the end.
I think that, no, yeah, of course. I think that's right, Mayor. I think what, that's exactly your example of the town halls for homelessness is exactly what I had in the back of my mind of how we could potentially engage. I'd just like to ask one last question, and then I'll step out of the way here and let's be able to go. But this question is for Howard. Howard, uh, this sounds like, you know, something that potentially needs more funding than we've given it. Is there funding that we need to do here at mid-year while we're having these conversations to add for outreach, both for council offices, for your staff? I don't want to miss the opportunity here to do the full thing. I, it has to be all the way. Can't just be like partway. So can you help me with that?
Yeah, Howard, if I could step in just for a second, Howard, let me just step in for a second. Number one, Angela, you're 100% right. This has to be a whole council initiative. There's no question. I think Eric, Eric and I have got it to this point, but is
I think Eric and I have got it to this point, but is all of us...
You guys did a great job.
Yeah, but if it's not all of us, it fails. And the diversity of the council, which is certainly reflective now, more reflective of the community, needs to be taken advantage of. And we've been talking about how to get some resources exactly into the council, how that, what that should look like, and Howard and Eric and I have been having that discussion to support all of us in how to do it, because I don't think any of us have the staff capacity to be able to do this with everything else that we're doing. So, that discussion is ongoing, and actually, Laney and I were kind of texting a little bit about where we can find the money. So, we will find it, but we need to do that, absolutely.
And just to piggyback on that, Councilmember Chenier, we're going to add those resources when we come back next week with the mid-year budget. It's, it'll get us through, at least to get started with through, I'm thinking, the end of this fiscal year. And if we need to bring an item back, add additional resources, given the outreach, and the workload, we'll do that. But we'll have enough in the mid-year budget to get us started, to make sure that we can support the council in its outreach to develop this lens. And also, to help clarify for city staff, what it is that we're going to be measuring and what that metric's going to be. So, it is really important work. I'm looking forward to it, and it will, again, it will be part of the mid-year budget that comes back next week.
And Howard, that mid-year budget would help not only city staff, but council staff, because just, this is like the piling on, and I just want to make sure they're, they're taken care of, too.
This is going to be specifically for council staff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we've got Councilmember My Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you so much. I definitely want to take this moment to thank Ami Barnes and Lynette Hall and Laney, and especially Councilmember Chenier and Councilmember Guerra for really leading this work, this very important, critical work. I also want to give a shout out to all the folks who called in during public comment, especially the Pacific Islander community that is often overlooked. So, just want to give a shout out for y'all to thank you so much for, for calling in and in speaking on this. And I think Lynette and Ami said it best, right? Like, this is just the beginning. And so, you know, make sure y'all stay informed and stay engaged in the process. I think like Ami said, you know, this initiative touches everything that we're going to be doing, right? And I see it as really laying the foundation for all the work in the departments, in our programs ahead, and in everything we do. And so, I, I'm so appreciative how passionate folks are about this, because it's going to inform even the general plan and how we execute, right? All our programs. We know that policies and institutions are at the root of racial inequities that we see across all indicators of success for our Black, our Brown, our Latino, Indigenous, our communities of color. And so, I'm really excited that we're having this conversation, and I'm actually just really grateful, Lynette and Ami, that both of you as staff is leading this work. As women of color, it says a lot. And so, first, I want to say that I, I trust your work. I trust your judgment to move in a way that's going to include community. So, I want to put that on record, and I'm just so proud that the City of Sacramento has y'all here at the helm, leading this work. So, I just want to say that. But as a policymaker, you know, I think we, y'all came here because you want feedback from us as a council, and so, that is what I'm going to provide today, because as policymakers, we set the parameters around this work ahead, right? And I will also say that it's not just about representation on the council, right? It's great that I'm Asian American, but I'm not here just to advocate for Asian Americans. I'm here to advocate for my entire community that is incredibly diverse. You know, I can only speak for my own Hmong experience, even as a Hmong person, I can't speak for the entire Hmong community, because the Hmong community is very complex and diverse in their own ways. So, one way, I think that, you know, we can be intentional moving forward, and I know the resolution is only a draft, is really this emphasis on data collection. And I think that's really critical in how we move forward, that we really need to be intentional about how we collect data in this city. I know Race Forward is a partner that, that we're working with, which is awesome. And I know that Race Forward has a commitment in collecting race and ethnicity data, right? So that we could use it to track and target the needs of our communities. And all of our policies, right, moving forward should include a commitment to track and disaggregated data, right? That's on businesses, that's how everything is going. And I remember the last council meeting, you know, I am asked about how we collect data, and I believe one of the staff mentioned that we only provide data based on federal standards, right? But I really believe that Sacramento should lead locally on collecting this data as, as a city that, you know, talks about being the most diverse. How can we meet the needs of our residents if we're not collecting that data? And I know, I always hear from the state level, from other local jurisdiction, that that costs money. And I understand that, but we can't meet the needs of our diverse community if we're not collecting this data. And so, I would really urge, you know, for us to think about that, but actually, I would even say add it as a whereas in the resolution. And so, when I talk about collecting data, right, I'm not just talking about for the API community, even though, shout out to all the organizers that called from the Asian American Pacific Islander community, but I'm talking about data across, not just race, ethnicity, class, and gender, sexual orientation, ability, but my immigration status, right? There's so much that we need to know in regards to their identity, the intersectionality, and the impacts on policy and programs. That's really key. And so, you know, my ask is really, one, a commitment to disaggregated data, so we can add a whereas, really acknowledging the importance of that and citing that, especially for the Asian Americans, right? We are oftentimes clumped as a monolithic group and are often overlooked. When we talk about economic success in the United States, Asian Americans oftentimes are noted as the achievers or stereotyped as the model minorities, and there is unintended consequences when that happens, right? Because what it ends up doing is masking the narratives of communities like Pacific Islanders and Native Hawaiians or the Mian community, and it puts our communities at risk and being underserved by not just the federal state, right? Because we follow those data, and the data that at the local level, we're also replicating the same kind of systems that other jurisdictions are enforcing. And so, I just want to share, if we can commit to the disaggregated data as a whereas, that would be great. And then, the last piece, I also, and I know that y'all are going to be intentional about doing this, but I also want to make an ask that, you know, as we move forward on the outreach, that the language equity is so key, like you, language rights and language equity is so important in this work, because you can't do racial equity without that language equity, right? And as we move forward, I just want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our communities. Even now, as I'm doing Town Hall, I'm the one translating in Hmong and sending things to folks in the community, asking folks to translate, you know, our flyers, right? But that's something that the city should be doing, right? That's something that we should be pushing out, you know? Even making sure that everything is in English and Spanish and the main language is spoken in our city. Like, we don't even have that at a city level, and that is, I think it's harmful for our communities, and it is a disappointment, right? So, Sacramento, as a diverse community, should just step up and make sure to lead in that, in that effort. Again, I think the, the main conversation around this is how are we going to fund this, right? And so, I know, I look forward to having that conversation with my colleagues, but I am, you know, I think that if we are to move forward with this racial, this equity, this racial equity initiative, it's going to be really important. One, the disaggregated data, and two, making sure we got money to support that work ahead. So, again, thank you so much, Lynette, Ami. I'm just so grateful that y'all are at the helm, leading this work, and I can't wait to see what's going to happen. And for all the folks that are listening, like the mayor said, like Councilwoman Ashby and Lynette and Ami said, this is just the beginning, so make sure, make sure y'all stay informed, engaged. We're going to need you to shape this initiative. So, thank you so much.
Very good. Councilman Harris, Jeff Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. My, those, those were really interesting remarks, and I'd like to build on that a little bit. But first, you know, thank you, Jay and Eric, for bringing this forward, but more specifically, thanks to the staff, to Allison and Coy and Jocelyn for, for working on this resolution. You know, we have to acknowledge the past if we're going to move into the future with purpose. And this is a pretty powerful statement. You know, there's some stuff in this, in this resolution that won't sit well with some people, but frankly, you know, you have to be honest about where you're coming from to understand where you're going. You know, if we're going to fill the promise of America and our democracy, which is equality for all, we have to pay attention to this. This, this is really, really deep and important work. And, you know, further, I want to say to Ami, you know, you inspire me. Your discourse is erudite and thoughtful and well-reasoned, and just, you, you're really, you're an inspiration, to tell you the truth, and I'm very glad that we have you on staff. Lynette, you as well. I appreciate, you know, doing, you're doing the yeoman's work, right? Getting out in the community and making this happen. Look, I, I represent District Three, which frankly, I deal with the perception all the time that District Three is a rich Caucasian district. It's not. It's very diverse. You know, in, in Gardenland in particular, there are people of many countries and many colors, a tremendous Latinx population in North Gate, and people of just many colors in South Ntomas. So, what I hear regularly is that we're not represented well enough, we don't get enough investment, we feel left behind. And that, I think, is the crux of what we're looking at here. People who feel that they are left out of the American dream, right? Just, actually, basically, just equality. And as a council, we really have to take this head on, and I'm, I'm really pleased. Again, I thank you, Jay and Eric, for bringing this conversation to the fore. It was said earlier that our budgets reflect our priorities and our policies, and that's really true. You know, how we choose to spend our money is very important. This is what we do as council members, choose to manage our budget in a way to reflect the needs of our constituents. I think that this resolution is, is kind of a beacon, a guiding light, to help us make those decisions about policies to create equity. And I, you know, to me, it's really tremendous work. It's, it's a place where I want to focus definitely, because I don't want to hear in my district that people feel unequally represented, unequally invested in. And, you know, this, this is not just about color, it's, it's about every group, it's about every identity, gender, you know, sexual orientation, everybody. You know, that's what America is. It's about true equality, and if we're going to get there, we have to reckon with the past, move into the future with intention. And the last thing I'd like to say is that Sean Loloie is Iranian, is Persian, he is now a Persian, or I should say Iranian-American. And, yeah, I'm very happy to have the diversity that we have on council. This is, this is a kind of a new day, in a way, I think, for the Sacramento City Council. I think that this is a great initiative, and I'm very happy that the city is taking this tack, and I do believe that we have great staff to move us forward. And my, you know, I, I really appreciate your comments, you know? One way to, to kind of marginalize people is put them in a box, like, say, Asians are Asians, right? And that encompasses all Asians. You have to be more sensitive than that, and I really appreciate your comments and your words about the diversity of the Asian population, Pacific Islands, you know, everybody has an identity, everybody needs a voice. And if we're going to make this city truly a place of equality, then we have to really get down in the weeds and think about this and make sure that everybody's voice is served. So, thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. I have, I don't know who's handed up for a side apology. I think Councilmember Valenzuela, Jennings, and Loloie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to lift up Councilwoman Vang, Councilmember Vang's comments that masters in public health, it's really showing there, Councilmember Vang, in your data and analysis, and I just think that's incredibly invaluable, and I want to echo what Councilmember Ashby said, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby, in terms of engaging. I mean, Councilwoman Vang just gave a great example of what she brings, and I think we each have a different perspective, but we all have our blind spots, and I often talk about how, you know, a third, a third of this city doesn't speak English as a primary language, and I cannot remember ever being at a public meeting where somebody didn't speak English. We did a workshop in South SAC, Ash, three years ago, and I remember a Mandarin-speaking elder saying he never rode the bus, because the bus stops were only announced in English from the automated system, and he's worried he's going to miss his stop, so he just never rode the bus. We could fix that in a second, but nobody, and I said, why have you never, why has that never been changed? He's like, well, nobody ever asked me. And so, you know, you think about all of that knowledge and need that we're just missing because we don't speak to folks. But I do want to lift up as well, I think what was said earlier around partnering with some of these groups, the folks who called in tonight, the folks that are in the community, and really lifting up what was said about going beyond the usual suspects, and how do we really get deep in this is by building those partnerships, because, I mean, there are whole segments of each of our districts that we probably, I have a whole community that's Cantonese-speaking that I still haven't been able to have a conversation with, and that kills me, but I'm not the right person. I want to learn, but I can only learn by leaning on the folks who know how to talk to folks, how to communicate, how to speak the language, and who can help me build that trust as a public official. So, I am super stoked that you're embarking on this. I have all of the faith in Ami and Lynette and the whole team at the city, and I'm really excited to work with you all. So, thank you again for the work you've done on this and for bringing this forward tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I too want to kind of thank, not kind of, I definitely want to thank Eric, Jay, Lynette, Omni, Coy, Jocelyn, and I hope I didn't leave anybody out, but if I did, blame it on my head, not my heart. I appreciate the work that's been done on this. There's a saying in life that says, the first step you take is to say that you can. And if you can't say that you can, then gather a group of people together to say that we can. And what we can do is we can address systemic racism, we can create a citywide, can create racial equity, we can create a citywide agenda to address systemic racism that has been going on for years. The staff has done a great job of giving us a roadmap. We have a draft, draft policy in front of us, and we have a timeline that they have in front of us as well. So, now it's just a matter of us taking the first step to say is, we can, and we desire to, and we want to, and we want to change what we've seen far too long and change it to a place that we want our children to be, where we want to be and where we want our children to be and our, those who come after them. So, I'm excited about being here at this moment. One of the callers talked about, why is it that, you know, Eric and Jay had to bring this forward? And why didn't one of us of color bring this forward? Well, you know, if Eric, Eric I know is a man of color, and Jay is a man who loves men and women of color. And so, I have full confidence in them and where their heart is to bring an initiative like this forward, and I don't look to point fingers or to point blame or to look at who brought it forward. It needed to be brought forward. It has been needed to be brought forward for years, and the time is now. And we have now got a resolution in front of us, a policy consideration in front of us, and a timeline. I think the question now is, are we going to commit to it? Are we going to fund it? And are we going to follow the guidelines that have been put in front of us? What they've done tonight is given us the opportunity to give our input to it, and they've given us a timeline to be able to do that, so it doesn't just happen to happen tonight. If you read the timeline, it's very precise about what will happen over what period of time. So, even if we want to give input to the timeline, we need to do that. But now is the time to take that first step. So, I applaud all of us for being in that position to accept that we are all responsible for taking that first step together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. If, and, if and when, not if, but when we follow through on the foundation that has been presented tonight, we will look back on this action as a historic moment for our city, because it is that fundamental to what we do. And I got to Councilman Loloie as well, but I'm sorry, I, I'll get it right to you. I want to thank Laney and Ami and Lynette and Allison and Coy and Jocelyn and Kelly Rivas, my chief of staff, who's been instrumental in this as well, all of you, together with the two lead council members. This is, though, our city's project. And so, let's look at that budget issue next, next week in terms of how we can fund this outreach. Let's make sure that what we do from here continues to be community-driven, from the inside out. from the inside out. And let us set the national standard because I think we can. Councilman Loloey?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chenier, Councilmember Gera and all the staff for taking all these steps for this initiative. I think it's great that we're focusing on racial equity and social justice. But here's where I want to throw in a little bit of a challenge into this mix or a monkey wrench. I think the goal also should be economic equity and economic justice. That we cannot just concentrate on one and disregard the other. We can focus on solving racial equity and social justice and still not have economic justice. We've seen that, you know, in the last 50 years, thanks to Dr. Martha Luther King, we have had some social progress. But at the same time, we've had economic regression. When we talk about communities of color, we should definitely make sure that we are intentional about talking about people versus place. It's not just the communities that we've been underinvested. We can, when we talk about a broken system, we need to make sure we address the economic system equally. Data has shown that poverty is the primary for many of the social ills in Black and Brown communities. And you know, that's something that really we have to think about. I think this is a great start. I realize that this is only a draft resolution. So I would recommend that whatever moves forward or it's to become addressed, we should include economic equity and economic justice in this resolution. And include people from districts like District Two in the, in the putting together of this resolution and get inputs from individuals from districts like District Two to invite them to sit at the table. And you know, Ami, I think you made a great, you had a great question on how do we move this forward? And really, you know, advancing policies that truly move this economic needle in the, in, in communities like District Two is something that can push this whole resolution forward much easier. I'm definitely excited that I'm, I'm part of this conversation. And I'm definitely going to put some stuff in writing and, and send it out to the staff. But you know, I, I'm, I, I, I can tell you this, this conversation tonight and what we're discussing with including the economic equity and justice. I am truly proud of you guys. And I'm actually, it's an honor to be part of this organization and this system that we, we can make something that other cities can utilize as Del Brook blueprint on how to move forward. So thank you very much.
Mayor, can I just real quick, Sean, publicly, I know I sent you a text, but publicly, I'm so sorry. Iranian-American, I will never forget. And I'm so grateful to have you on the council. And I'm looking at, at my screen. I know everybody's screens are a little bit different. But I have Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Gera. I have Ami and Lynette, Councilmember Loloey, Councilmember Vang and Councilmember Valenzuela. And I would just note that no two are the same. And that's the beautiful thing about Sacramento. I'm so happy to be a part of it. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, members, let's, let's take a motion and, and a vote. I think it's.
I move it.
Second.
Oh, actually, really quick, I'm, I'm moving it with the, well, it is a working draft, but I, to add the whereas regarding disaggregated data. Sorry, we didn't finish that conversation. So if we could also add that whereas, and I know it's still a working draft. I don't know if this is coming back to council.
It's a working draft. It'll come back. I think, yeah, add that to the motion in terms of intent.
I'd like to add that amendment, to add the disaggregated data to the resolution. And so I'll move that, I'll move this with that, that amendment, so.
Can we also add the economic equity and economic justice as part of this as well?
I have no doubt that our folks are taking notes in the next draft you see, which will add this in and then go out to the community. Lynette will be responsible for that. Eventually it will come back to the council.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the action is to consider and provide direction, so no motion is necessary.
Okay, well, I think it was the best non-motion motion we made. Full of positives.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And I think, I think one of the most important aspects of the, of the item was to consider direction. And as identified in the staff report, I know this is a very critical one for our city staff and, and talking about all the work that's been done. And so I just, I just want to paraphrase because that is the, the intent of the item. Here's also to provide direction to the city manager to come back with the mid-year budget with the appropriate resources to do that level of in-depth district by district work.
And, and if I may address the council, I really want to emphasize in our conversations with Race Forward, in our own work with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, it is extremely important to have your all input on how we can organize ourselves around deep, community-driven ownership of this resolution and how we can move that forward in the phased no-budget way to the phased budget way. We really are going to need to understand and leverage the relationship. And, and that's what I was meaning about the, we're all in this. Like this is all of our districts. This is all of our community. This is all of our people that we're talking about. And while I know you all represent districts, I, I want us to kind of have that de-siloed approach because we have to reach the pockets in the areas of the Sacramento community and region that we have never reached before if this is going to take root, if this is going to be successful even long after the legacy that you all leave. So how that works would be also very important, that feedback and that community, you know, approach and innovation and how we really understand what the community envisions this resolution because we want this to be a shared product. We want this to be an owned product with community when it comes back to the council and what that looks like. And that might take, I, you know, that was something that the internal team, when we were talking about. We may not know, but we really do need that feedback and that, and that expertise that you all have from your staff and from your own innovations and your own work to really leverage and ground this in community. Because that is the only way that this will really, really emerge and be sustained for the future. So thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Can I suggest something in terms of direction? Because I'm really thinking about the outreach piece as Lynette and Ami. I know that budget is coming up, but you know, and I'm thinking about Councilmember Valenzuela's story, you know, just around the language equity piece, right? And the outreach and it, as I'm listening, it sounds like we're going to need resource for that. So I don't know what that number is, but we'd like to direct Howard to look into that and work with Lynette and Ami on figuring out what that number is. Because if we're really truly talking about authentic engagement, that really means like, you know, making sure we have folks ready to go on translating interpretive services, right? And that costs money. And so as we move forward with that, we just need to be intentional about that. And I know the mid-year budget's coming up. But if, if Howard can work on that with, with Lynette and Ami and bring it back, because there are going to be some dollars associated with the outreach. And so I think that would be a good first step.
Yep, absolutely. Councilmember Vang, that's exactly what we intend to do. We'll bring back something. We have an idea about what that would take to expand on the language services that we have right now and the translation services, but absolutely, we'll come back.
Very good. We're going to move on now. Thank you. We do have actually a very complimentary agenda item next, which is the consideration of Scale Up Sacramento and Inclusive Economic Development Action Agenda, which is Councilmember Loloey said, which is absolutely true, that racial, gender, LGBTQ justice is vital and so is economic justice. And so I turn it now over to who? Ms. Howard Chandler, Michael Jasso, our Assistant City Manager and his excellent team.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Jasso here, Assistant City Manager. So first of all, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city manager and members of the public. Tonight I'm joined by Melissa Anguiano, our Deputy Director of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development, and Denise Malvetti, the Interim Economic Development Manager. Because you pointed out, this is a natural compliment and I appreciate that we have the opportunity to present Scale Up Sacramento and Inclusive Economic Action Agenda in concert with the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative. We're very fortunate within the Office of Innovation and Economic Development both to work very closely with Ami Barnes on the work she's kind of spearheading. And we're very proud to claim Lynette as a member of the, of the Office of Innovation and Economic Development. Indeed, equity and inclusion are central in the analysis and opportunities identified in the work. We fully expect the work of this initiative, that's the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative, to inform any discrete projects or programs that we bring before to this council in addition to the various other commitments the council has already endorsed to focus our efforts on our underserved communities and economically disadvantaged residents. I would like to offer a few comments on Scale Up Sacramento for context before a short presentation by Denise Malvetti. Number one, Scale Up Sacramento is a framework and agenda. It's not a manual. By that I mean that first it is a starting point for the city writ large, government, private sector, nonprofit and institutions to identify fact-based opportunities that we have to collectively influence the growth of Sacramento's economy. As noted in the message from the City Manager and the Inclusive Economic and Community Development Investment Committee, which accompanies this document, it provides an in-depth analysis of the forces that drive the region's growth. It identifies priority strategies built around the region's unique assets that also offer greater opportunity for jobs and wealth creation for all Sacramento, all Sacramentoans and identifies some promising initiatives. It's important to note that Scale Up Sacramento does not replace other directional documents or initiatives such as the Creative Edge Plan, the Climate Action Plan, the 2040 General Plan Update, or the Citywide Racial Equity Initiative, to name but a few. Rather, it's a means to be viewed and used in concert with that work and hopefully at its best allow for the creation and implementation of mutually reinforcing activities. While Scale Up Sacramento recognizes the importance of linking strategies to neighborhood development, creating neighborhood-specific development that connect each area to the unique economic opportunities, it is beyond the scope of this specific action, action agenda. But to complement the agenda, the city has launched the Cross Department Neighborhood Development Action Team, NDATS. Kind of NDATS leading strategies are one, to align and coordinate resources, drive neighborhood business growth, build local capacity of people and businesses, and implement community-driven transformative projects in particular places. To successfully achieve this neighborhood development, it's important that we link our neighborhoods to the strategies and initiatives outlined in this action agenda. Scale Up Sacramento is intended to be a living document, which is continually updated as it helps enable coordinated strategic investments. Executing on Scale Up Sacramento will require ongoing stakeholder commitment, accountability and coordination across strategies within Scale Up Sacramento and beyond. Denise will present these at the end of her presentation as necessary next steps developed with our investment committee. Most of the strategies and even some of the initiatives identified have some componentry that are already underway, either through the city or educational institutions or the private sector. Some of the obvious examples of this are in progress that has been made with the development of Aggie Square, the advancement of the California Mobility Center and the disposition of CARES funding and furtherance of digital skills building and broadband expansion. Finally, I want to thank the many individuals and companies, organizations and institutions that have contributed to this work. The team was led by RW Ventures, kind of that pulled together national and local consultants, which organized research and data, led focus groups, conducted interviews and undertook analysis and framework development. The list of those that contributed information and insight is literally in the hundreds. I would especially like to thank our regional partners, Sacramento Aerial Council of Government, Valley Vision, the Sacramento Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, who simultaneously developed the Regional Prosperity Strategy, which stand, which stands with Scale Up Sacramento as, in being fully aligned. A very special thank you to staff within the city, especially Melissa and Denise here tonight and others, including council offices and all the members of the Inclusive Economic and Community Development Committee, who provided continuous input and review throughout this process. I now turn it over to Denise for the presentation on Scale Up Sacramento.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, honorable mayor. Very pleased to be here this evening. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, again, good evening and thank you so much. Pleased to be here this evening and certainly appreciate this item following your discussion on the racial equity work. I think this provides, you know, an opportunity, as Ami said, to really embed that important work in all of the work we're doing here at the city. So I'm going to start with a brief history on the inclusive economic development work that launched back in late 2017. And many of you were here to spearhead that work with Project Prosper, which had a significant community outreach component paired with national experts to really glean information from our community related to economic development and really to hear from the community about their priorities. Simultaneously, our regional partners had launched some work with the Brookings Institution, regional partners being Valley Vision, GSAC, SECOG and the Metro Chamber to also look at the Sacramento regional market. And there are some pretty telling findings from that report that I'll talk about in the next slide. But that information really became a call to action. And so this council took a couple of actions in 2018 to really commit to the city's inclusive economic development. The Brookings Institution work also made clear that we needed to dive a little bit deeper into the regional economy. And so we went back out into the community in late 2018 and did a few focus groups focused around people, place and business. And we gleaned some additional information on priorities, but then we really needed to embed that in the economy. We really needed to align what we are hearing in terms of, you know, focus on entrepreneurship or, you know, focus on education and really align that with opportunities here in Sacramento. So we embarked on this work in spring of 2019 with RW Ventures as our consultant leading this work. And you'll notice that we embarked on this work some time ago. We had a substantially completed document in the, right around the time the pandemic hit. And so we really put the development of the document on pause while we addressed the pandemic and focused on deploying the CARES funding into the community. But we really think it's important now to also simultaneously look at the long-term economic growth here in Sacramento. And so here are some of the key findings that we learned from the Brookings Institution that really became that call to action. The first one, you know, Sacramento's economy, if you looked at just at a very high level, we were, you know, showing good economic growth. However, if you looked below the surface, there are some troubling statistics as it related to growth, prosperity and inclusion. And this is troubling because, you know, we also learned that the, you know, the most inclusive economies tend to be the most sustainable over time. We also learned that, you know, one-third of the residents in Sacramento were struggling to make ends meet. And disproportionately, these were residents of color who also had lower educational attainment. We learned that Sacramento's tradable industries were growing slower than the rest of the nation. And really, this is a troubling statistic because tradable sectors are what bring outside money into our region. We also learned, and I think we've learned with the pandemic, how important digital skills are, that, you know, people with high digital skills and high education levels are demanded by employers, but it also rewarded. And I think that this has become increasingly important, you know, since the pandemic hit because even to apply for most jobs, you have to have a certain level of digital skills. And so when we looked at digital occupations that required medium to high digital skills, Black and Latino workers were underrepresented. And so that showed a clear gap that we need to work to close. And this is important because you'll see the second to last bullet, that our workforce, our. that our workforce, our community is very diverse, and so we need to close the educational unemployment disparities in our community. And so, again, that was a call to action to proceed with Scale Up Sacramento. And really, what this is, as Michael said, it's a guide. It shows us opportunities for all of our residents to participate in the economy. And I just want to read a brief quote from the study because it certainly says it better than I could say it in terms of what is inclusive economic growth. And it seeks to fundamentally reposition disadvantaged people in places, particularly communities of color, as leading owners, drivers, and beneficiaries of the enormous economic growth opportunities in the new economy. And so when we look at inclusive economic growth, Scale Up outlines the four dimensions in which you look at inclusive economic growth. Employment, so ensuring that workers of all skills and backgrounds are prepared and matched and upskilled for quality jobs that have career ladders. Ownership, growing companies owned by people of color to generate wealth and find opportunities, especially in high-growth industries. Location, and this is really important in why, you know, economic development and community development work so closely, and why the Neighborhood Development Action Teams were launched. How important it is where jobs are placed and the connections to our residents. And participation, who is sitting at the decision-making tables? And so when we look at economic growth, Scale Up Sacramento outlines the five market levers of economic growth. There's a slide for each one, so I will just go over them very quickly here and get into them in more detail. Industry clusters, innovation and entrepreneurship, integrated neighborhood and regional development, and the connected cross-sector economy. And the one in the middle, which is most important of any economic growth strategy, is our workforce. It is the human capital. It is our residents. So industry clusters, the report looks at, you know, opportunities in various industry clusters that are already emerging here in Sacramento, and provides a general overview of the industry and then provides some opportunities in Sacramento. And those industries are future mobility, so this could include, you know, electric, autonomous, shared vehicles, life sciences, which as we all know is a huge industry, and this really looks at one opportunity being in cell and gene therapy. Clean economy, again, another large cluster, and the report really hones in on opportunities in clean energy. Agriculture, food and beverage manufacturing. And then one that percolated out of this initiative in particular is this Headquarter and Business Services, because there are so many companies here to serve the public sector that these companies could also pivot to serve, you know, high-growth industries. So of the five, within the five market levers, the report also highlights, you know, strategies and initiatives for implementation to achieve, you know, more inclusive economy. And so you'll see on the right-hand side, the initiatives, the strategies and the initiatives. And so I'll quickly go over some of the proposed initiatives. The Food Manufacturing and Innovation Park. And so this one is of particular interest because agriculture, you know, food and beverage tend to naturally be more inclusive with more women and people of color in the industry, and tend to be, you know, microbusinesses. And so a food manufacturing innovation park could be an opportunity to scale some of those micro and small businesses. Because in a lot of cases, there, a big barrier to scaling your business is having the equipment to manufacture, having the equipment to pack your products. And so in order to, you know, lower some of those barriers, Food Manufacturing Innovation Park could assist with that. Another initiative that's proposed is the Mobility Hub. And there's one program that, you know, Michael mentioned also underway that, you know, is very related to this, the California Mobility Center. And so a mobility hub looks, you know, in future mobility, there seems to be some real opportunity here. And a mobility hub, you know, similar to the food innovation manufacturing park, it's where people could come together, innovate, all people working on, you know, similar industry, and it's an opportunity to move, you know, from research to actual development and commercialization. Another proposed initiative is a Bioscience Manufacturing Park. Again, you know, there are high barriers related to manufacturing and commercializing products. So this would be an opportunity to lower some of those barriers. And the Life Sciences Inclusive Cluster, again, you know, employers coming together to remove some barriers and ideally create pathways in the life sciences sector. And then the second market lever, innovation and entrepreneurship. Again, the future economy, the economy we're in is very knowledge-based. People are constantly, you know, innovating, and so how do we move those innovations to the next step? How do we help them stay in Sacramento and grow their business? And so there's two proposed initiatives under this market lever, and Scale Up Services and Diversity Management and Ownership Services. You'll Scale Up Services, you all are likely familiar with the Economic Gardening Program that the, our innovation group launched about a year and a half ago, which identifies, you know, small businesses, works with them on growing their business. And then there is some opportunity for some financial assistance to really implement those changes at the end. You know, this would be an extension and expansion of that, but really focusing on, you know, businesses that have an opportunity to scale up. And this is important because as they grow, they have an opportunity to hire more of our residents. Diversity Management and Ownership Services, also related to Scale Up Services, but really with a focus on women and people of color and businesses owned by women and people of color. And so it provides similar services, whether that's, you know, business consulting services, financial services, but again, helping businesses grow. But also this Diversity Management Services Program, you know, there are models across the country of, you know, identifying people that are in, you know, management positions and helping, you know, women and people of color acquire firms, putting them in positions of management of firms in high-growth industries. So Integrated Neighborhood and Regional Development, again, how important place and our neighborhoods are to our inclusive economic growth plan. And so a proposed initiative here is a mission-oriented master developer. So likely a nonprofit developer that works with both the public and private sectors to do a really good project. You know, they often have access to patient capital, maybe not as high returns, but a project that, you know, creates good jobs in the right places. This Connected Cross-Sector Economy, which is also referred to in our report as governance. And so really, this is an opportunity to connect the public, private, and civic sectors. There's a lot of work, a lot of great work happening in Sacramento, and how do we really align that to be more efficient? And so one proposal there, one initiative is this Corporate Leadership Alliance, which really could take, you know, many different forms. It could be employers coming together to focus on employment and employment training. It could be, you know, focusing on building up small businesses so that they meet the supplier needs of an industry. And the last and the most important is our future workforce. It is our people, and in the report is also referred to as human capital. It is really ensuring that our residents have the job, have the skills to fill jobs today, and more importantly, the jobs of the future. And so a proposed initiative, and it is a robust one, you know, it's an employer-led inclusive labor market system. And so this is really, you know, looking at how training and hiring is done, and it may look different than, you know, how it's done today. And it's really needs to be led by the employers who know what skills are needed for the jobs. And again, making sure that all of our residents have an opportunity to participate in the jobs of the future. And so here's just an illustration of the industry-based strategies and some of these cross-cutting and programmatic strategies. And so as I mentioned, this work started some time ago, and we didn't put our inclusive economic development work on hold. There's been a lot of work citywide in numerous departments on inclusive economic development while this was under development. And here's just a short list of some of those. We've launched the Neighborhood Development Action Teams with Innovation and Economic Development and Community Development. We formed the Inclusive Economic and Community Development Investment Committee to really advise us on, you know, inclusive economic development policies and strategies and projects, and they are instrumental in us bringing this forward. And working with that committee, we developed the Inclusive Economic Development Investment Guidelines that council adopted in late 2019. The, you know, Citywide Racial Equity Work that you just had a discussion on. The Regional Prosperity Strategy. And the next two are some very closely related to this work. It's the CARES Workforce Investments. Many of those workforce investments align quite well with the work here. Digital skills, as we know how important that is in today's economy and the next economy. The California Mobility Center and investments in training in clean energy. We have continued to support our small businesses through our CARES investments and technical assistance and the loan program, but also in the Economic Gardening Program and the Micro Mentor Program that the innovation team had recently launched. The implementation of the Climate Commission recommendations, which there's a, you know, significant green job component to that. The Creative Economy Investments and the work on Aggie Square. So where do we go next? And so this is, you know, our plan for where we go next with this inclusive economic development work that we developed in partnership with the Inclusive Economic and Community Development Investment Committee. And so really, the first next step is to prioritize these initiatives with an equity lens. Again, it's embedding this equity work that the city is embarking on in the implementation of this plan. It's setting measurable goals, and this goes to, you know, Councilmember Bang's comments about the need to have data on our community, to have data and information on our businesses so that we can track if we are moving the mark. Identifying resources and roles to implement the priorities. You know, the city will likely have a role in all these initiatives as they move forward, but our role might look very different. You know, the private sector will likely take a leading role in a number of these. But it's identifying who will be the leader in these initiatives. It's continued engagement of the community and our stakeholders. Again, the business community is critical to this, as are our residents. We need to continue to hear from them on their priorities and learn from them about barriers that they've experienced in achieving economic growth here in Sacramento. We're going to continue to align with other city initiatives. Again, it's the Neighborhood Development Action Work, the Citywide Racial Equity Work, the Climate Action Work. All of this complements each other. We're going to build upon the CARES investments. As you all know, you made a decision to invest a significant amount of money in the community and a significant amount, about $10 million, into workforce. We're getting information now on how those programs worked, what the outcomes were. And so I think we'll really be able to build on that as we further our inclusive economic development work. We'll continue to coordinate with our regional partners, which is critical in an economic growth strategy because Sacramento is one jurisdiction in a much larger region. Our residents work outside of the region or outside of the city limits, and people from the region, you know, work in the city of Sacramento. So it's going to be very important to have a coordinated implementation. And here's an important one that was raised by our investment committee. You leverage corporate and philanthropic resources. You know, we certainly have finite resources at the city, and there's a number of corporate and philanthropic resources that really align with our goals with inclusive economic development. And so we need to identify those opportunities so that we can leverage our funds. So that concludes the presentation. I look forward to your questions and comments as we look at moving forward with our inclusive economic growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. This is, this is so rich. And we can tell incredible amount of work. I, we want to hear from one member of the public, want to make a couple of comments. Let's have the members do the same. Who's on the line, please?
May I have our caller, please? It appears our caller has hung up. We will try to call them back, Mr. Mayor.
Was, was there, I'm sure there was outreach done with all the business stakeholders.
Mr. Mayor, do you have that caller back? Caller, are you ready to address the council?
Can you hear me?
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Mayor Steinberg and councilmembers, my name is Evan Schmidt. I'm the CEO of Valley Vision, a nonprofit and civic leadership organization supporting economic prosperity, social equity, and environmental sustainability in our region. I'm calling to express my support and my excitement for the Scale Up Sacramento Inclusive Economic Action Plan. First, I want to commend the thorough and thoughtful work of city staff and committee members in developing a plan that is inclusive, has an economic equity lens, is data-driven, and is aligned with regional efforts. As Michael and Denise both mentioned, Valley Vision, along with our partners and with the help and coordination with the city of Sacramento, advanced a regional inclusive economic development plan called Our Path Forward: The Prosperity Strategy. It's very important that our strategies align and complement each other from the city to the regional scale, which they really do. In fact, to ensure alignment, we worked from a common data set. We centered around common goals and values. In both cases, the plans create equitable and inclusive processes and pathways to economic growth. They build on the comparative economic advantages of our region and city and develop market opportunities. I believe now is the time to work together on inclusive economic growth as we think about economic equity, as well as recovery and reimagining as a result of the pandemic. The equity lens, the community engagement framework, the work to build on existing investments, and the connectivity with regional partners like us are all critical components of the Scale Up Sacramento Action Plan, and I'm glad to see their emphasis in the staff report and presentation. Valley Vision is focused on advancing regional inclusive economic growth with a particular emphasis on addressing workforce challenges and preparing for the future of work. Digital equity through access to broadband technology and digital skills, as well as supporting inclusive economic growth in our high-growth economic clusters across the region. We truly appreciate the partnership with the city, and we look forward to continuing our work together in pursuit of our collective inclusive economic growth goals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. All right, let's, let's hear from the members of the city council. Start with Councilmember Geta, then Harrison Valensway.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the staff for their work on this. The, I know this has been a long time coming. We've been pushing on this and trying to develop an economic strategy for, for our city. I do want to, you know, one, point out that we've developed this a lot through a lot of different points of contact. Everything that we're doing is not in a silo. We have to look at it through, again, the inclusive economic development goals that we had, our REI work, the initiative that we just talked about, making sure that we're, we're looking at investments in areas of our city that have not seen investments, and then using models like the Neighborhood Development Action Team to, to learn from where we're actually talking to residents as part of the development of our specific plans, and not just as town halls for information. So I want to, I want to recognize all of that work that's been done to inform this and get this to where we're at, and looking at it also in an area of how do, how do we do provide the best for working families in Sacramento? I think that's got to be our number-one focal point. How do we create economic, economic prosperity, economic independence for our, our own residents? The, the second thing obviously is creating a sense of, of economic resilience, you know, when we have issues that, and climates that we have in our city. And I think about, you know, the pandemic right now. When most of our retail low-wage jobs, many of them were impacted by, by the pandemic, by the shutdown, much of what kept, kept people employed was healthcare construction and also manufacturing. Manufacturing is still a significant component to our regional economy, but specifically Sacramento. And in a place where we've had gaps in, still, you know, I talked to Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Institute, and they talk about how they have almost 10,000 jobs in the manufacturing area here in our region that they haven't been able to fill. So we definitely have a gap in there. And those jobs are jobs that pay above the minimum wage, they pay above a living wage, many times without a four-year degree. So to that point, let me go back to a couple of things. As I appreciate the staff report that I received from the staff, thank you very much for the depth in that. But as I read through the document and even listened to the presentation, Denise, I mean, it came to, it came to me that we didn't specifically call it out that what we're trying to do is create living wage jobs and high-paying wage jobs. And, and, you know, going through that, I never heard those, that being specific. Now, having worked with the California Mobility Center, SMUD, and talking about how do we really focus in communities like Glen Elder Avondale, and then locating a facility like the California Mobility Center south of Fruit Ridge Road in an area that is, if through CalenViroScreen identified as one of the biggest EJ locations, that is intentional about why we're doing that and where we're doing it and who we want to recruit as a, from our Sacramentoans to employ to be the future creators, innovators, from our own neighborhoods. from our own neighborhoods, not importing people, but creating that here locally. But it wasn't, that wasn't specifically spelled out and, and intentional in this. And so I, you know, having seen, having gone through this, I think that is, that's a point that's missing. Yet the other, the other point that I, that I saw was a gap is that in workforce training, you know, there are many, there are many programs that do it, and many providers that are in there. But, and some of them are employer-led, some of them are partners with our employment training agency. But I, I didn't want to hear about how we're partnering and how our, our labor partners and workforce partners that create, that have, that have apprenticeship programs, that have training facilities are a part of this. So I heard, I did hear our business partners, and that's important. We have to, we have to link those two, but but I didn't see that or even spelled out or called out on that. So that, I think, is a, a bit of a, of a, either, either red flag or a link that we have to make sure that we connect. Because they represent many sometimes of the workers that we're trying to get into the high-page weighing jobs and are trying to bridge and link these connections together. The focusing on the industry clusters is critical. I think we have to figure out what we're good at, what we're going to be good at and grow on that. Definitely the life sciences, which is why the work with Aggie Square. And in that aspect, we're working closely with the Central Labor Council and the Building Treats Council on targeting zip codes to make sure that we're recruiting from those areas. So learning from that experience, and I know you brought that up in, in the staff report, but I think calling that out specifically and the fact that we're working with the Central Labor Council, part of this process, I think, needs to include, include that. And, and obviously, technology. I mean, look, I mean, I, I am a, a big advocate for manufacturing jobs, construction jobs, and STEM jobs, because I know personally that those are what moved our family from, you know, from, you know, piece-rate labor as farmworkers into the middle class within less than a generation. I think that is, that's, to me, I think, focusing on those industry clusters, we've kind of hit, hit that mark there. So first, I want to, I want to ask maybe that poignant question to Denise. Either it was an oversight or, or, you know, artistic challenge or whatnot, but why didn't we call out specifically the, the need to develop high-wage jobs or living wage jobs in the, in the report?
So what, I mean, that really is the core of an inclusive economic growth plan. So really, at its core, you know, we are looking at opportunities to create good jobs for our residents here in Sacramento. It is to, you know, build on what we're good at and really connect our residents to those jobs or programs that lead them, you know, into these jobs. So you're absolutely right. That is really the core.
Well, good. Go ahead, Mike.
So, and I apologize, my internet seems a little unstable with the wind. So your point is well, well taken, and I would echo Denise, what, if we didn't say it, we, I think it's embedded in the report at various points, but fundamentally, the clusters were identified weren't just because we have some assets to build off of, but it was also because they represent growth potential kind of on a national, international level and growth potential for good, high-paying jobs that would be accessible, you know, to our community. So for instance, as, as you know, in the case of Aggie Square, while we're speaking about 5,000 jobs, there are about 40% of those are estimated not to require a college degree. They require training and accreditation, potentially accreditations, but they have more diverse pathways. So that's important. But one of the things we also didn't want to neglect in the report that is very often in work that's done in economic development that's particularly kind of, kind of targeted to underrepresented communities is the opportunity for ownership and wealth building. Because it, it also has to be part of the equation for those same communities, you know, kind of that, that create opportunities that are accessible and realizable for kind of entrepreneurs and innovators within Sacramento itself. So if we haven't called it out enough, I, the point is well taken because it should be, because clearly one of our challenges is we need to raise wages across the board in Sacramento. It's not just a cost issue, it's also kind of a revenue issue to every Sacramento that lives here. So it's a, it's a point well taken, and take a look at being able to bolster that.
I want to try to move this along a little bit here because I think we've, it's been a long day, and I want to make sure we're able to keep everyone's attention. I, I would ask you, just following with Eric Guerra's question, let's add it to the report. Let's be explicit and specific about it, okay? As you, we amend the report, let's do that, because I think that is a key community value here. High-wage jobs and and livable wage.
Absolutely.
Benefits and some form of retirement security. So, okay. Let's move on.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not, I'm not finished yet here, because I do want to make, I do want to, I do want to make a motion, but I I want to add that to the report. The other thing is, I do think we should, what I want to direct staff is to work with our, with the labor partners and also to reach out to like the Economic Policy Institute and other, other institutes that can help drive that as well with that. So I do want to put that as part of it. And then the, the, the last piece that I want to bring in is is, is being much more intentional about working with some of our community groups that, that are doing environmental justice work to bring them in part of that. Now, SMUD, I think they've have had a history of, of that, working with NASB and SHIF, National Cited Black Engineers Computer Scientists to bring and recruit Society Hispanic Professional Engineers and ACES as well. So one of those things, one of the things that I want to make sure that as we move forward, particularly when we look at food manufacturing, a lot of that, and I, you know, a lot of this is in my district too, the Future Mobility Hub and Bioscience, is I want to make sure that we're bringing in those partners on the front, partners on the front end on that part. So I want to do that. So I'll, I'll, I'll end with that right there, because I know it's a long night, Mr. Mayor. But I want to, I'll go ahead and move the staff report with the direction that we explicitly call out and be clear about high-wage jobs, living wage jobs, and defining that in the report. And second, that, that staff go directly and meet with our, these, our different labor partners that are involved in this, that are, that are training people already for living wage and high-wage jobs. So I'll leave with that. I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. That's been moved. Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, there will be. I'll second it. Go ahead. Let's now move to Councilmember Harris and then Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is a good report. There's a lot in it. I'd like to build a little bit upon what Councilmember Guerra said. You know, and I've talked about this with staff previously. But, you know, in the report, you talked about digital skills. I want to talk about these digital skills. I'm talking about hands and fingers. So the skilled trades is not mentioned in this report, and I think that it really should be one of the industry clusters. It's, you know, it's very apparent that through the COVID crisis, the one sector in our economy that is really shown through is construction. And, you know, frankly, you can't build a house with a computer. Skilled trades are still the backbone of a large sector of our economy. And when it comes to equity, there are so few women and minorities in the trades. There are tremendous opportunities here. Again, I've had this conversation with Denise and Melissa and, and Michael. I think you all are in agreement with me here. When you talk about opportunity and wealth building, there are huge opportunities for people to build contracting businesses, especially minorities in this town. And as we rebuild our economy coming out of this pandemic, the need for construction workers can be understated. We are already showing that we have a real dearth of skilled trades. We have not paid attention to vocational education for years since the Schwarzenegger years. You know, Arnold Schwarzenegger made a big deal about vocational education, and it really didn't take hold. It didn't take root. And now we're way behind the eight ball. I like your expression, Mayor. I appreciate that one. But, but
Some of us spent half a career in the legislature, working to build up career technical education, got a lot of money for it, so.
Yeah, and I appreciate those efforts, but the fact of the matter is that we are way behind in our region, and there is tremendous opportunity here. I would love to see, you know, a focus on the trades and vocational education, bolstering our apprenticeship programs, both union and non-union, because both programs are really valuable. You know, all the thing about the agricultural sector and life sciences and mobility and adaptation to climate change, these have huge growth potential. But let's not look to the future and forget what's right in front of us. You know, there are a lot of job possibilities in the construction industry and the skilled trades. So, you know, I would think that as you look at this report, you would add another industry cluster, which is right in front of us and right here and making money right now, which is skilled trades and construction. Eric mentioned manufacturing. It's all together. So I agree with my colleague, Eric Guerra. And I, I guess the mayor has seconded the motion, but I really think that you could retool this report a little bit and make it more reflective of the actual opportunities that sit right here, right now, in, in our region. So again, I appreciate your work, Melissa and Denise and Michael. But let's not look so far into the future that we forget what's right in front of us. Thank you, Mayor.
Good point. So I'll take that as a friendly amendment as well.
I concur.
Indeed.
Very good. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, Mayor. And I do want to start by echoing appreciation for the time and energy that staff and stakeholders spent on this. I am going to offer some critiques and suggestions, but I don't want that to overshadow the fact that I do appreciate that this has been a lot of work to get it to the point where it is today. But I would be remiss in not recognizing that addressing equity as the next step, the next step, means that this report as it stands doesn't fully capture the barriers and opportunities that exist in our low-income communities and communities of color to ensure that they're going to benefit from this and on their own terms. I know it's a lot of work to figure out how, but not starting with engaging the communities that we hope will benefit from this initiative and not having even a vision of sort of what the roadmap looks like to get to hell means that we don't know if this is going to be able to actually benefit the communities that we're hoping it will benefit. And as you all mentioned, this was largely drafted before COVID, which has fundamentally changed everything about our economy. And I think a lot of stakeholders have been really busy, to say the least, over the last year or so, dealing with the impacts of COVID, dealing with getting things done in the community. And so I, I really think there's a lot that we could potentially revisit here. And frankly, just to say, I wish we started with equity conversations. And I mean, piggybacking off of the conversation we just had with the racial equity initiative, valuing equity means more than saying equity, it means doing equity. And doing equity means starting with equity as the foundational way that we build a report moving forward. And I also have concerns with some of this language that's in the report, frankly. The first two sentences in the overview section of this report reads, and I quote, "Development and discovery has been a part of Sacramento's DNA from its earliest days. The origins of modern-day Sacramento, the indomitable city at the heart of the Golden State, are entrepreneurial, seeking untapped market opportunities and capitalizing on them." And then it goes to start with Sutter's Ford, and it starts with the gold rush. And as someone whose family has been in the valley for at least 400 years that we know of, I frankly don't even know what to say about that being the first two sentences in a report coming from our city. It's hurtful and, and erases a lot of pain and a lot of stuff that happened in this community that deserves to be recognized if we're really going to say that we're pursuing any report that warrants having the city of Sacramento's logo on it. And I'm sorry to be so harsh, but this is something that I clearly take very, very personally and really want to see addressed. I also have some really specific issues with specific suggestions in this report, to name one, with the inclusion of biomass incineration as an opportunity in our region. And just to piggyback again off of something Councilmember Guerra said earlier, as someone who does environmental justice and climate justice in my day job, I have a lot of problems with that. And I oppose that strongly, and for a lot of reasons that I'm not going to get into tonight, because I know we still have a lot to talk about. However, I do recognize that I'm coming in midstream on this, that this is something that's been in the works for a long time before I came in. So I really want to make clear that this next step of community engagement, of equity engagement, needs to be done meaningfully. It needs to be done with a blank slate. We need to recognize, similar to what Councilmember Harris just said, the things that we might be missing. Needs to recognize the things that might need to change. It needs to recognize the fact, like, when we go to these communities and say, what do you need? Restaurant worker out of work renting in Midtown? What do you need renter at CB Circle, New Halesia? What do you need resident in Meadowview or resident in Del Paso Heights, North Sacramento, to really take advantage of what you want to do? And that it might be totally different than what we're looking at right now. So my amendment that I would like to propose, if Councilmember Guerra is amenable to it, is that I really want staff to come back after they do the equity and community engagement. I want this process to be super open. I want us to be willing to hear what we're missing. I want us to talk about what the real barriers are, access to finance, access to whatever, transportation, all the things that we need to know. This is going to really be an equitable and inclusive economic development strategy. And I want staff to come back before they pursue anything next, because I want us to have another conversation about this before we start talking about aligning resources or pursuing grants or doing anything like that. So if you're willing, Councilmember Guerra and Mayor Steinberg is the second, I would propose an amendment to your resolution that makes clear that staff will come back after they do the community engagement and equity outreach on this report.
Yeah, I would be supportive of, of that effort. I think the, I think the, the important thing is, I, I want to make sure that we don't get caught up in the circle where we're always, you know, we're not moving forward. We got to take a first step. And I, I, I agree with, with your points here, particularly on, you know, and also the language on on Sutter's Ford and what that, what that implied for, to the, to the native community that was here already, the native families that were here. So but yes, and we do have a standard, a standard practice of coming back when, when we have, when we put together a new policy together so that if we see in something that we're, that we're changing it, not before it gets too far off, but we can adjust quickly. So I would support that effort.
I appreciate that, because it's more than just, it's more than just a check-in, right? Like, this is like, this motion is basically saying, go forth and align all of our efforts in this direction. And so I just want to make sure it's super clear. Thank you, Councilmember Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lowey.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll make this very short and quick. First of all, thank you very much to the staff. Clearly, a lot of time and resources went to this 106-page document. But the process was initiated two years ago, and a lot has occurred since then, like the pandemic, which is briefly mentioned in this report. But, you know, I'm, it's not very clear to me as who or what scale up is. Is it an agenda that the city of Sacramento will stand behind? Is it just a framework? Is it an economic development department? Will it become a new entity? So I'm a little bit, need a little bit of clarity on that. You know, within the report, one of the recommendation in the report is that Sacramento established a business and financial services company that engaged small and mid-sized firms that have high-growth potential and are seeking to grow rapidly and have the capacity to do so. Doesn't Sacramento already have these financial services? You know, whether it's the banking system, the SBA loans, or is the report saying that, you know? So what is the role of the city in, in that proposal? You know, I want to make sure that this is not just a report that we're checking in boxes and smoke and mirrors and to the people that have been left behind for so many years, and they've kind of lost their confidence in, in us. And we have truly have to kind of move the needle on that economic justice that we talk. So this kind of is connected to the, to the previous topic that we talked about. But we have to move that needle, especially in the neighborhoods that look like many of the neighborhoods in my district. We know the issues. We know the needs. We just need more resource and more action. And we need to genuinely act in the sphere of what is truly equitable and inclusive. And that's, that's, that's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So last comment, I, I want to say thank you. This is really
Hey, Mayor. I'm super sorry to interrupt you, but I have my hand up too, and I'm not sure
I did not see you, Angelique. I apologize. I did not see you, Angelique. I apologize. Go, go.
No, it's getting late and we're.
You go.
I can be very quick. Actually, Sean said, Councilmember Loey said, much of what I think about this report, which is, I know how long everyone's worked on it, and there are good pieces to it. And it looks really nice, and it's easy to read, but I'm not sure what it actually does for us. I don't see the action items in there. And to the extent that there are action items in there, I don't know that they reflect the values that I just heard in a two-hour-long conversation from this body. And I just want to say this one piece, and then we can move on. And I'm happy to support whatever everybody wants to do tonight, as long as the understanding is that this isn't fully reflect, I don't think, what this council is trying to achieve. And really, if I'm going to be honest, the mayor spent the last four years saying, "Invest in communities left behind." And he asked you to put this together, and I think he's trying to be really supportive of you, but I don't think this doesn't hit where he was trying to go. You know, there's nothing in here about those economic corridors being the top-of-the-heat priority, which he said over and over. I've heard him say it over and over. And, you know, Northgate and Stockton and all of it, right? And just finally, I would say this. I worked on the Centene deal before anyone in the city of Sacramento was working on that Centene deal. 5,000 high-wage jobs to our region and a new corporate headquarters. There is nothing in this document that would have helped me, nothing. So if your goal is 5,000 high-wage jobs or more Centenes or headquarters or businesses in those communities, as a person who's walked through that process for our city, I don't see anything in that report that would have helped me get there faster. So I guess, Jaso, my comments are really to you. I'm really looking for, what are the proposals coming out of the Economic Development Department to push Sacramento's economic development efforts forward? And obviously, this council wants to specifically focus on communities left behind, but what is the way that you want to do that? And I don't, I think this begins to get there, but doesn't quite get there all the way for me. Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry.
It's okay. So maybe I'll take it from there, Michael, if I can, and you, of course, good word. You know, I think the comments reflect the great passion that the members of the City Council have to ensure that we grow this city in the right way, in an inclusive way. And, you know, the debate is no longer growth versus no growth in our city. It was 20 or 30 years ago. That's not the debate. Now the debate is, I think, the growth is good if it is clean, if it is green, if it's sustainable, and if it's inclusive, because we need more opportunity and more jobs for people. I sort of started this thing as a mayoral, as a candidate, and then as a mayoral platform back in 2016, building upon what my predecessor had started in a different form. I think this report, it has a couple flaws, and I think that the Councilmember Geta's amendments, I think, strengthen it. But I think it's a terrific piece of work. I do, and I think that to establish this foundation with those changes is really, really important. But I think the point that you're hearing, and I do agree with it, is that this needs to be a living document. It's a living document. It's not a static document. And the next step is certainly, how do we activate what is contained within these important pages in a way that represents a strategic, a financial investment plan? You're doing that a little bit with the Investment Committee, but, you know, is it Measure U? Is it General Fund? We've had that discussion at the Budget Committee. But that's the opportunity here, is to take this and apply it to a commercial corridor or more than one commercial corridor, to build on the CARES workforce development issues and suggest to us specifically how we want to expand that to some sort of scale, to put some budget numbers next to the specific strategy, so that combined with some of the things that are happening because of your leadership, our leadership, and organically with partners like Aggie Square and the Mobility Center, that this can in fact be a guiding strategic document. So I think this is really a great, great start. And I want, I don't want you to be discouraged. I want you to take this good foundation, great foundation, and then help translate it into an ongoing living document. If we do that, I think that the feedback is going to be not great, but it's going to be great. And what else can we do to help you help us and help the city? Okay? So, Michael, last word, Mr. Jaso, and then we're going to do the next last item.
Sure. No, I appreciate the comments of all the council members and you, Mayor, with respect to the criticism and observations on it. I think we always, one, expected that it's hard work, and economic development in general is hard work, and clearly, engagement with the community is critical in that componentry. So I certainly appreciate the comments in terms of things that should be reflected. Some things weren't reflected in part because it's happening on other fronts. And as I said, this document was meant to complement many of the other works, whether it's going through the Workforce Collective. I think with respect to the construction and trades, something that we have been keenly aware of and have been moving towards on a number of fronts, whether it's, but Councilmember Harris, you're right, it isn't clearly called out in this document, and perhaps it should be. So I think we have a lot of things, constructive comments that came forward. I think your most basic point is the right one. This is meant to be a dynamic document. This is never, it's never done. And I think one of the things that we may need to better figure out how to articulate is that it's not just intended to be a plan for the city of Sacramento government, i.e. what we do as an actor, but in fact, the entirety of our community to rally around and figure out where can we create opportunities. There are many things that will happen where we may be a standard bearer or have a leadership or a convener, but we are not the principal agent in moving that forward. That's the nature of strong economies. And in fact, in most kind of regional economies, the government actions set the tone or critical investments, et cetera. But the vast reality is that the vast majority of economic activity happens outside of the confines of government. So it is figuring out the appropriate role for any of these things. But I do think everything that's been said has been taken to heart on how to improve the document. I think we see pathways for that, and I look forward to bringing that forward.
Mayor, can I just say something really quick? I'll keep it short, one minute. I just want to say, I just, you know, really agree with some of the comments of my colleague, especially on the trade piece, because I noticed it wasn't part of the item as well. And definitely want to support Councilwoman Valenzuela's amendment on making sure that we really include a true community engagement process. The other piece is really around the COVID. Given just that we are in the middle of a pandemic, I want to make sure that this living document, as y'all call it, is reflective of the pandemic as well. And yes, while it is a living document, coffee's barking. While it is a living document, you know, I want to make sure that we get it right, because it really sets the foundation for opportunities and partnerships, right? And so I just want to say that, but thanks, staff, for their hard work and look forward to the work ahead. Hold on, Pop. I think she needs to go to the bathroom. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, very, very good. Okay. There is a motion and a second as amended. Let's call the roll, please.
You, Mayor Rodham Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Loey?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sheenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Geta?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Vang?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. Okay, thank you. Continued work, continued evolution. Very good. One more item tonight, and it's an oral report from the City Manager and from Bridget Dean. It's the Citywide Cleanup Protocol and Response Models. Bridget, are you going to launch us here?
I am. I'm going to start with the first part of this. So I do have a few slides, which I'll post, and then also make sure you all get afterwards as well. So my name is Bridget Dean. I am your interim director of the Office of Community Response, and I'm just going to cover a little overview of cleanup process in the 2020. I'm going to show you some stats and just kind of go over how we get to the places we get when we're doing some of those cleanups across the city. I'm going to share that with you now. The other thing I just want to start out by reminding everybody is that in July, this past July 2020, on July 14th, I was appointed as your interim director and tasked with creating a new model that shifts the way we respond to a lot of things within our city around social service needs. And homelessness is obviously one of those areas that will be coming into the department and be responded to with some of these different models. So with that, I'm going to share my screen real quickly here. One second. By now, I teach. I do this all day long. You'd think I would have this down. All right. Okay, so we're just going to talk real quickly about the cleanup response here in 2020. And with that, I just want to start out, how do our cleanup locations get determined? We get asked this a lot, and so I just wanted to bring the various ways that we actually get to a location for cleanup. 311, as many of you know, is our automated system where people can report concerns or locations, and that is one of our primary ways that we receive locations that have other trash piles or, you know, extra cleanup needed or some other concerns that might pop up with that. So that would be our 311 system that's available through our city website and other means. And many of our community members use that to engage us. The non-emergency number or 911, community reported, as you notice, I've listed that on 311 in this bullet, because it's important to recognize that the majority of our calls related to cleanup actually come through our non-emergency number or 911 at the police department. And I'll show you some numbers here shortly as to how many of those actually are coming through that model. And when we shift over to Department of Community Response, those will come over to us. Forensic Clean Proactivity. Forensic Clean is the contractor that we are contracting with as a city to provide cleanup services across a myriad of areas, including our, it might be a homeless-related response. It might be piles of excess trash, leftover leaves. They work with us on much of our critical infrastructure work. So they are across the city, and I'm going to point out some other key areas where they've been very supportive lately in our city, providing some additional services. But their proactivity comes from, they might be heading to a location, and they see a couch thrown off to the side of the road or large piles of trash or other items that they grab and pick up for us. They also have regular spots that they pick up on a daily basis or weekly basis. And so those areas around that location might lead them to pick up additional trash as they come across it. And then the other thing is, the Forensic Clean often also gets directed by other departments in the city, including mine, requests by Office of Community Response. So here are some numbers from 2020. 311 received a total of 4,638 requests to respond to a complaint or homeless location primarily, or trash being stored. Not that they're the same thing, but just to be clear. And that's community-driven completely, so 4,638 of those requests came through 311. Here's the number I want us to really start talking about as a community. The non-emergency 911 received 34,121 calls related to homelessness and encampments in 2020. And those are community-driven calls. And it's important for us to understand how the calls are getting driven, how we're getting to the locations we're getting to. And as you can see, over, you know, almost 40,000 of these calls a year are actually community-driven into our 311 or into our law enforcement call lines, which I think is something we need to be talking about and addressing. And then Forensic Clean provided 1,936 services throughout our city in 2020. They were contracted at the beginning of 2020, so in one year, that is currently what they have provided for services in response for the city. So out of those, the other items I want to talk about at Forensic Clean are just a few areas. So 1,936 locations were contacted and served by Forensic Clean through various means. That totaled 47 tons of debris or 94,400 pounds of trash off of our community streets. 28,181 needles were disposed of appropriately and safely. There are a few additional things that Forensic Clean does, though. They deliver garbage bags throughout our city to homeless encampments and other locations to support those needs and the needs of the individuals within those encampments. During the summertime, they often provide water to encampments. So they do double duty frequently to assist several people in our community. They service and clean 30 to 50 of those portable restrooms and sinks within our city that we are currently, we have out to support our homeless community. And they also service those sharp containers, so they remove the full containers and replace them with empty so that they can be available to individuals as needed. And then the other key about Forensic Clean, which is why it's important for us, is they are hazmat, they do hazmat material remover, and they are hazmat removal certified. So my last slide is just to remind everybody where we are heading. And in that, it is the Department of Community Response. We are going to be shifting the way we respond to a lot of our cleanups and our homeless population in general. So we will have a direct number available. There's a Department of Community Response team that will be initiated, that will come through 311 or that direct number. And then we'll also be working with community-based organizations to help get them initiated out to help us resolve some of these concerns and issues that come up when it comes to encampments. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and just close my slide here. And this is my email, and I encourage anybody in the community who's interested in reaching out to me, working with me, collaborating with us, to move forward with a lot of our concerns around cleanups or other issues, to please reach out to me, and I am more than willing to come to the table and collaborate. So what I want to share after that brief little bit of information is that the call gets initiated with the location. We go and review the location, and based on the need, we schedule and provide the cleanup. So that location can be a quick one-stop. We have a couple locations here in the community where we had individuals reach out to us with their encampments and ask us to pick up the trash for them once or twice a week, and we do that. We also provide park trail cleanup along some of the parks in the River District. There's an area out there on the bike trail where we placed about 25 metal cans upon the request of advocacy and our homeless population, and we drive through there on a regular basis, and they pick up those cans for us. So across the board, we're working with Forensic Clean to really address some of our cleanups. And I just want to remind everybody in our community that I encourage you to continue to be community-initiated on these concerns you have, but also to recognize that it's community-driven and that much of the work and response that is being asked when it comes to cleanup is being asked by our community, and we need to be addressing that as well. So with that, Mayor, there's a second portion of this, but if there's any questions directly for me, I'm willing to take them now or will take them now.
Okay. Do we have members of the public who are signed up to testify?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have eight callers signed up.
Okay, let's hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Howard.
There's another part of the presentation we should probably hear before the public comments.
That's fine. Okay.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, Council, this is Chris Conlon. As Bridget just described, that's the methodology that we use to address some of the issues with the homeless camps in the city. So we're going to talk a little bit about a specific issue. Earlier today, the Police Department released video as a part of their transparency to show an incident that happened on January 7th. This was when the city addressed a public safety hazard of about five encampments that were blocking the sidewalk, bike lane, and some of the street on Alhambra Road in the vicinity of the Route 50 overpass. The camps were creating a severe hazard to passing street traffic and blocking pedestrian ADA access on the sidewalks along a high-traffic route. The occupants of those camps were notified on the 5th of January about the fact that they were in violation and asked to move. On the 7th, Impact Team, police officers, along with Forensic Clean, went out to the site. Two of those individuals had outstanding felony warrants, and they had to be arrested. Two of them accepted the hotel vouchers, one moved to their own volition earlier. And what we have, we're going to show you, we had a lot of questions about how it was determined that the refuse that was left on the street was trash, how the occupants, the former occupants, determined that. We'll show you a video clip that'll identify that. That was also part of the videos released earlier by the Police Department. We'll just show you. We'll just show you that particular snippet. And the other thing we're going to have you show is there was a question of a alleged threat by one of the Forensic Clean workers. And you'll see, as the police were trying to get information from the witnesses on that unsuccessfully, they weren't getting any, any cooperation to be able to find out more about that incident. So I'd like to have Captain Justin Rizley from the police department show you those videos. Captain Rizley, are you on?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Conlon. Just, just to add a few additional comments and then I'll show the video. I would suggest and encourage those of you that are interested and haven't seen it to, to watch both videos in its entirety. I think it really showed the magnitude of the issue there and explained many of the questions that some might have. As Mr. Conlon mentioned, Alhambra and Axe has been a problem for us for years. It borders Caltrans property as well, which has made it somewhat problematic as we have, the problem has sort of moved around over the years. It is one of our citywide most complained-about areas from the residential and business community and generates many calls for service as well. Our Impact Team, among others, have been out there almost daily over the last several years in an attempt to mitigate the ongoing issues, which have gotten particularly bad over the last few months. The, just to remind everyone that the Impact Team currently gets involved in really three areas. And this is partly under the, or is dictated by the Public Health Order as well. Private property, critical infrastructure, and public hazards. In this case, this was a public hazard, blockage of several hundred feet of sidewalk, bicycle lane, and vehicle traffic, power that had been illegally tapped, supplying power to lights, appliances, and other devices. There were rodents, feces, gasoline, urine, exposed wiring, wiring, and other hazards at this particular location. Now, just to be clear on the Impact Team and our approach, it's typically not about enforcement. In fact, we rarely arrest, cite, or physically remove individuals. Rather, it's about outreach, developing relationships, and attempting to align services to those in need and gain voluntary compliance. Several weeks prior to January 7th, the day of the cleanup, Impact Team officers contacted those at the location, advising them of the eventual cleanup offered and, and offered to connect any of those interested in services. As Mr. Conlon mentioned, several took advantage of the opportunity. During this time, there was also discussion with all the individuals out there about their property, giving them options to leave what they didn't want behind. In fact, we even offered transportation to move any items to storage, to family, to take to family members' homes or other locations of their, their desire. And at this time, we also started the posting process, which is, you might imagine, constitutionally required, have us give proper notice. The notice is a 24-hour notice, which is consistent with case law, supported by your city attorney's office, practiced by a number of other major cities. However, I think it's really important, I want you all to understand that we generally almost never expect an individual camp to be moved within that 24-hour period. As in this case is a great example that it was a several-week process, which is very typical for us. And we know we have time on our side, and our goal is really to get people to voluntarily leave, which, by the way, I would say 95, 99.5% of the time, we get people leave on their own. And this, in fact, was the case here, people, the majority of them left on their own. You might ask, one of the reasons, you know, why we don't have a longer notice period? And one of the reasons is, is there are instances where there is a significant hazard and an additional time is not needed, and we wouldn't want to wait longer than necessary to evade the problem. But as a matter of course, you know, of practice, we always take much longer to move people along. So as Mr. Conlon mentioned, towards the end of this cleanup, we were contacted about, about the brandishing of a knife between the cleanup crew and, and parties who were filming the event. There were no persons identified themselves as a victim, nor was anyone willing to provide a statement. There were identified unidentified witnesses on the scene indicated they had a video footage, but ultimately refused to provide that to the investigating officers. As you, or some of you may know, the footage emerged on social media. And once it was released, we actually, I had the sergeant overseas, the Impact Unit, go back and review all the video and do another look at the investigation and documenting, documented it accordingly. So with that, I'd like to share a few videos. And what you're going to see here is, the first video will be the, the officers contacting two females on scene, and they're very specific about their intent for the property that was there and left behind. And then it should, if it all works out right, roll into a second video, which is our officers trying to assess and figure out what occurred with this brandishing incident. All right, looks like I'm having some challenges here. Hold on. Are you guys seeing my screen by chance?
Yeah, see your screen, but it's your background.
My background.
We're seeing your full screen. There you go.
Yeah, that's the video, Justin.
Hey, are you guys all done with the, with the car?
Yeah, do you want him out?
Just this one, because he's kind of, because we got to keep direct traffic because of him.
Yep.
And then did you hear about that knife incident?
One of them got poked, I guess.
I don't know if poked or not, I don't know. I didn't see the guy that I thought was...
I'm kind of hearing about it, but they tried to save it with me at one point and they kicked me out of their circle, but I was involved in whatever situation.
You're one of the supervisors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this lady here and the gray sheen guy, I think that he might have stuck the knife at the ground or whatever.
Oh, oh, no, so you did tell me, you say it's put in the car, but he cut himself.
Oh, what did your guys got?
One of my guys got cut. Cut himself cutting a tire.
Well, I guess they're asking that he threw the knife at him or something.
I think he dropped it when he caught, find the whole situation.
Well, they got, you want to walk over, grab her and go walk over and look at it?
Show them, I would love that.
Like I said, we would have bested after we were done with this. Dude, it's on video. I have that video. The knife thing? Oh, okay. Does someone have a knife video that they will just stop videotaping right now and show it? No one's got the video, because we're trying to sort it out. If they don't want to record it, we'll see how they do. We're saying they're mad earlier, saying some guy, one of the workers threw a knife at him, a rash and knife. I said, well, let us deal with this and then we'll come back to the knife issue. They're like, we have it on video, but now they're like, well, not for you. Not for the police, then who? They don't want to show me the knife video. I said, let me see the video now, and they're like, not for you. So.
That's so weird.
Now, hell no. Because we're good to go. This is not going to be, guys, we need you to stay on the sidewalk.
So I don't think we're going to see the video.
Right, sure. Share with the police who you're going to share it with. Social justice, you're going to get the guy lynched.
Yeah. Trying to try not to hit out on the tires.
Oh, really?
Uh-huh, they put a, on Facebook, and pretty much straight shot slashed their tires. He doesn't really...
He said, they know our name, Forensic Containment. Forensic Containment.
One of their guys threw a knife, and so they're over there probably discussing their little fucking sorry sweep the capital thing that happened last night.
I asked to show, see the video, you said not now.
I can't give you the video, I'm online. I can't, that's not how technology works.
I need a video of... Ma'am, I was across the street.
You checked to see if that matters, and I, we were over here.
Homeless gentleman, that homeless gentleman came over and said, hey, someone just threw a knife. So I walked over, so I walked over to talk to you and said, let me do, let them finish this and then we'll deal with this. So now I'm asking to see the video, but no one can provide me the video.
Do you remember when it first happened and I asked you to do something about it?
And I said, as soon as they're done with this, I will. And now they're done with this, and I'm trying to... No one wants to share anything with me.
Why don't you talk to Brandon tonight?
You have multiple statements.
You have multiple videos, but no one wants to show me the video. Okay, are we done?
Yeah, I guess, can the city, can those guys move and we're good?
I thought they were.
Okay, I'm going to try to share one more video. As you could see, the order was wrong on that, so apologize if you just bear with me a second here.
Justin.
You're not sharing, Justin. Sorry, share screen.
You, apparently I'm not sharing my screen, so let me... Buy this once again.
There you go.
Okay, let me see, make this big. Okay, thanks for bearing with me. Let's try this. Those of you who texted me, much appreciated. If this, if you're not hearing this, somebody please text me, let me know.
Hey, you know, Caltrans is coming to get you, near your side over here, right?
When?
Have you seen the Caltrans truck right there?
Well, they told, they told the lady, they told the lady, when she came and asked him what was going on, he said that they were coming to clean up, not to make nobody move.
I'm just worried because...
That's, but that's the man that I talked to, that's what he said. So like, my stuff, I mean, my stuff is moved pretty much, but like, if he not, if he gonna go back on his word, then...
I don't know who, I don't know who you talked to.
The manager.
They're different. I mean, they're different than us. So I have no contact. So I want you to be ready to like, if they're like, hey, we're coming to take it. Are you like a couple of bag grabs away from being ready?
Oh, no, they can take it all. I got all the stuff I want.
Okay, that's why I want to make sure, I just want to make sure you're ready to go.
Yeah, all my stuff is right there.
Okay, guys, I didn't, I didn't want you to lose everything.
Yeah, they've been here since seven o'clock this morning.
Okay, okay. Now, whose tent is this over here?
That, that shit, that's, that's...
It's trash.
And that's what I asked earlier, I said, well, if you guys, because they left. So I'm like, if you guys were coming to clean up and not to make nobody move, why aren't you, why aren't you done cleaning up? Why, why are you guys not finishing cleaning up? You understand?
And all these people are coming to you guys to defend, they think we're out here like tearing you guys down.
Yeah.
Darling?
Two staff to see councilmember Katie Bellin's will. This is supposed to happen, this needs to stop right now. This is not an illegal site.
It's not, this is all trash. Everyone, everyone's had placed in bathrooms, hotel vouchers. They said they don't want it, like...
Yeah, they agreed to...
What is all that stuff?
That's all trash. I just don't want to, I don't want the bother.
We're not taking camps down. We're picking up trash that people have been housed and vouched for, and they say, we don't want this stuff anymore, and we're not taking anyone's property. Okay? We're all officers, there's no supervisors out here, but he is the coordinator.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. Those are the two videos, and appreciate your patience on seeing those and hopefully it was helpful for all of you. And I'd like to turn it back over to Mr. Conlon, so thank you.
Thank you, Captain Rizley, and appreciate everybody's patience getting the videos on. I believe the city attorney had a couple of comments, and then Mayor, it's back to you.
Go ahead.
Good evening. The only thing that I wanted to add on is that there was a list of frequently asked questions that the city prepared. Our office worked with the city manager's office and Bridget Dean's office to prepare that so that that's available and posted on the city website as far as the parameters of any of these encampment management cleanups that the city may conduct. And we have, as, as Captain Rizley presented, our office does advise on any legalities to make sure that we are always in compliance or that we are in compliance with the CDC orders as well as any applicable county health orders.
Okay, good, thank you, City Attorney. Let's hear from the eight members of the, or 10 members now in public, and then turn it to the city council. Remember, there's no action tonight, this is an oral report.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Erica, and I live in District 5 in Councilwoman Breschner's district. And I just want to say that I'm really disappointed because the police, again, are showing a presentation, and you guys are not or have not invited other important members of the public who have pertinent videos and information that show both sides of this. The Sacramento Bee actually showed a video of that incident, and they showed way more than what, what the public's seeing right now. That encampment has been there for over a year. And that encampment has a majority of our black neighbors that live there. And when we're talking about gentrification in a park, that is part of it. What I, what I really want to emphasize and get across tonight is when you ask someone who has accumulated so many things because this is how they live or where they live, and you ask them, do you want to go get shelter for three nights? And they have to look at basically their whole households right there and say, am I going to go somewhere for three nights and then have to start all over again? It does not make any sense. And I would just urge you all to think about these three-day motel vouchers. They're not effective. And it really seems like it's simply just to ramp up your numbers so that you can say, we serve six people, three nights apiece, when really maybe you could have done four of them for seven nights apiece. It, it's inhumane, and this is all happening... There was a sign right out there in that encampment area that I drove, I drive by it every day. It said Eyes Wide Shut. Why are our eyes wide?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, thank you. Yes, I'm calling tonight, and I listened to the testimony from both the interim... Yes, I'm calling tonight and I listened to the testimony from both the interim individual and the police department. And it sounds like Forensic Clean has regular contact with the unhoused community. So I'm wondering why they were so aggressive in this cleanup where one of their employees brandished a weapon. Also, I heard the officer say that they're into developing relationships. But I've seen video where advocates are treated very abrasively by law enforcement. And as far as trying to get the footage off of the citizens who were recording, I'm curious why law enforcement feels entitled to such videos when, one, we know that they will take the device for up to 30 days. And, two, law enforcement does not release their own video cams within a reasonable time when the community themselves request it. We are basically treated the same way that the law enforcement officer was treated in that video. And I would like to know why they were failing to finish cleaning up the mess. There was a stove sitting in the middle of the street on the first video. And I don't know why you would ask traumatized individuals to cooperate with their abusers when they were faced with a threat from someone working for their abuser. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. So there needs to be more than 30 to 50 bathrooms available for houseless folk. And that's why there were feces at Alhambra. And I heard that they were blocking the sidewalks and ADA access Sacramento restaurants. Their outside dining also does the same thing. And the hotel vouchers only last a few days. And when you don't have any shelter options afterwards, when your tents and belongings are taken away during the sweeps, then what else is there? It's cool that there was offered transportation for their items to go to storage or their families. But if they're houseless, perhaps they don't have that kind of support system or those resources. So what then? The alternatives after a sweep are insufficient and cruel. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, I was calling specifically about the sweeps that happened on January 7th. I also want to take note that you guys are very careful in calling them encampment cleanups and not sweeps. As was stated by a previous caller, the encampment that was being bulldozed had been there for over a year. It was people's homes. When you ask people, the cops said they were asked to move on the 5th, which is silly. Where are they supposed to go? The city is not providing any options. And what they do, they're not enough. They're not long-term. The other thing, Forensic Clean, the contract, over a million dollars paid to them, and they were demolishing people's things. These people were taking stuff out of tents, throwing it down, breaking it down. On their Instagram, they praise themselves in destroying people's homes and having this job through the city to go and destroy these camps in a time when people are not supposed to be moved. To use any video of a cop asking a person if they move their things as an example that you guys are all working together is a little ridiculous. Those same people don't have any options. And this is just a routine. Like, what is she supposed to do? You saw at the end of that video when they asked if that's what they were doing. Of course, yes, that is what you are doing. You are displacing people. There is no alternative and you need to stop. The contract with Forensic Clean is illegal. It should be legal. There's no reason that they should have even the term proactivity in relation to them stopping and doing things. Like, how were they given the authority when one of their employees, which conveniently I left out the video, to them pulling out a knife?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yeah, stop the sweeps, house people. Forensic Clean, their employees are unhinged. The contract should be legal at this point. The city needs to do better.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert to the Mayor and Black Cheesecakes. Mayor and the city council, I was in the queue on number three, and then I was closed out. So I don't know if you're gonna have public speaking that on the agenda. But can Linda or somebody tell me if that's the case? Otherwise, I need to speak on three.
It's a special meeting. There is no public comment. And I'm on the agenda. Mr. Lambert, we appreciate you. We hear from you on the same thing every single meeting. And we're gonna, you know, doing our best to help you. But it's been a long night. And if you might see the phone, which you're appreciated. Thank you.
So can I speak on three?
No, we're beyond three. So it's too late. Thank you, Lambert. Next caller, please.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Daphne Harris. I would like to do a couple of things. Point of information, on 311, that service is not available after hours. And when you're actually looking for services on weekends, it's difficult to get responses. Two, the queue for item number five is closed, and we're discussing item number four. So I'm not sure why that is. And then the last point, I would like to challenge each of the council members to adopt five families in their district that are homeless and actually kind of do a walk-in-they-shoes type situation so you can understand the true issues that are going on in your communities. Because I think there's a lot of distance between what the actual problems are that families are going through and what you perceive the issues to be with the homeless. And I think if you were to follow or to adopt five families in your own districts to understand what their plights are, do an intake on them to understand where they are and how many times they've cycled back into your community, I think you'd get a better understanding of the homeless problem and how to fix it. So that's just a suggestion that I would recommend to all of the council members.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your time.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi. Tell me if I'm the only one that's seen this, but when exactly were the PDs going to show the actual sweep happened? Because none of the two videos actually showed them doing the sweep. They showed them being straight-up assholes and knowingly asking for somebody to take, like, to stop recording and documenting the sweep in order to share with them their video, knowing full well they can't, like, they can't do that. It's not something that you do when you're actively recording live. You can't just give the cop their video. But why are they even out there in the first place? It doesn't make sense to me with the Office of Community Response. And it's supposed to supervise social workers to answer non-criminal 911 calls involving mentally ill and homeless individuals. I don't understand why we are clearly seeing, what we are clearly seeing instead is just a list of outdated resources that Bridget Dean provided up there that one of the callers just mentioned actually doesn't provide the service that they're saying it does. But many, like, but many of which aren't even available during COVID. Rather than collaborating with local organizations that actually meet and build relationships with the unhoused, you're seeing collaboration with law enforcement, which, like, which, even though the county doesn't do, but the city, for some reasons, can insist on doing. It doesn't make sense when there are all of these organizations that have already doing the work that the city's trying to do, and all of a sudden, we're just entering police into the mix for whatever reason. What, because Bridget Dean has connections to law enforcement? These are serious questions that you need to ask. And like, there's already public video out there that showcases that these are sweeps. These aren't cleanings. You're not just, like, you're not just asking people to move. You're taking all their things. And it's like, and then forcing them to relocate.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
I'd like the Office of Community Response to actually treat the community with the respect it deserves and stop collaborating with law enforcement.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I just want to say that I'm a community member from District Four. First, I want to acknowledge that right now, it is raining and will be raining all throughout the night with the National Weather Service issuing a high winds advisory until tomorrow afternoon. It's absolutely appalling to know that the city of Sacramento will not open its one and only 30-person warmish shelter for unhoused folks that have been left to tolerate the storm independently and in the middle of a global pandemic nonetheless. We heard amazing initiatives this evening about the city's efforts to promote youth empowerment, attain racial equity in the workplace, and local economic development. And all these issues are vital. They are unsubstantial unless they are approached through acknowledging the class dynamic within it. And I think it's important to tie tonight's meeting with the reality of homelessness and poverty as if any of these efforts do not work. If any of these efforts don't work, it directly leads to homelessness. As a local advocate, I recognize and acknowledge the need to assist encampments with sanitation and in full support of that, especially during a pandemic. But it needs to be called out that these cleanups look and feel a lot like hostile sweeps of encampments. Cleaning should be removing trash, not using claws and tractors to remove survival gear that unhoused residents of Sacramento need in order to survive weather, such as what we're experiencing right now. It should not require law enforcement escorts as this leads to punishing, citing, and criminalizing homelessness. The Office of Community Response is supposed to supervise social workers to answer non-criminal 911 calls involving mentally ill and homeless individuals. And through the leadership of Bridget Dean, bringing more community-based solutions when addressing unhoused individuals. Rather than collaborating with local organizations, we're seeing collaboration with law enforcement, who are offering unhoused members three- to seven-day motel vouchers with absolutely no follow-up to actual services. I have witnessed this firsthand if I've personally fed and found shelter for an unhoused 70-year-old man who was dumped into one of these motels and expected to just figure it out himself. Why are we wasting our money and resources on this and not actual solutions? My question to the council is this. What makes the Office of Community Response...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes. What makes the Office of Community Response any different than the Impact Team? Why are we investing millions of dollars to reinvent the wheel while driving in circles? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Flojan Kofar. And similar to last week, I'm calling in on this item because I'm concerned about the way that it's been presented. The police are stakeholders. And so when we heard last week from the fascist white supremacists, we missed out on hearing the counter-narrative to that presentation. And similarly, this evening, I was hoping to see a presentation from the Sacramento Homeless Union, or Services Not Sweep, or the Poor People's Campaign, or other advocacy groups. Because I think we're all aware that there's a video out showing someone who is a city contractor pulling a knife on people. And that video was not shown tonight. And I have serious questions about that omission. And so this brings up a structural issue because I know several of you have worked in the legislature and you know that we show pro and con. We allow multiple perspectives to be shown, and yet these meetings don't allow that. So that's a structural issue that I think we need to address overall because it comes up consistently in terms of the narrative that's shared in this public meeting. In addition, I want to talk about the trauma that's been experienced by our folks who are experiencing homelessness. And there's clear guidance from the CDC that sweeps are not supposed to be happening. And I understand that these are considered to be cleaning. But I'm really concerned about the narrative that's being weaved here and whether or not these actually are sweeps under another name. Lastly, we have this Office of Community Response, and yet I don't see anyone from that office there, or maybe I'm mistaken. Instead, I see city contractors as well as police out, which was exactly what we were trying to stop with the creation of the Office of Community Response. So I have some serious structural questions about how our outreach to our unhoused populations are going to be handled. And lastly, you all were presented with city properties that are owned either by SHRA, the city or the county. And if we are going to talk about cleaning places or moving people, we need to also be talking about where people are going to go, and there need to be clearly identified places. If not, we are doing something that's not only immoral, but it's also against the public health guidance from both the Centers for Disease Control as well as our own Sacramento County Public Health Office. So please take these things under advisement because I know this is just receive and file. But in the future, we need to be taking action on these items. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, my name's Charles Ware. I'm in District Five. Hello?
You have two minutes to address the council. Please proceed.
Yes, I'm with the Oak Park Homeless Project. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed.
I have a couple of questions real quick. It sweeps the new current politically correct terminology for, I mean, cleanup, the new politically correct terminology for sweeps? If Alhambra's been a known problem for three or four years, why has it not been solved? How many dog parks, not that I have anything against animals, but how many dog parks have been built as opposed to shelter for homeless? And why is there so much police footage of a cleanup and none of a young black man being killed by law enforcement? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is our last caller. Let's turn it over to the city council member for comments. I have a comment, but I will wait for my colleagues here. Go ahead. Who's up? I want to, Howard, did you have a comment before?
I did, just very quickly. I know the hour's getting late here. On the videos, I mean, we heard from the last council meeting that, you know, potentially we didn't show all of the video, and they were just showing from one perspective. So in preparation for tonight's meeting, we took out the, kind of the highlights of responding to some of the calls we got from last week. But we also posted all of the video earlier this afternoon on the Sacramento Police Department's transparency site. So you can watch it from beginning to end, unedited. The faces are blurred, just so that we're not... So we just, I just wanted to say that. The other piece about the gentleman brandishing a weapon, that was not something our police department witnessed. It was another video that we don't have access to. So I just wanted to make that clear.
No, that's really an important clarification. I just would add, though, it might be the better setting with which to review video, which is to put it out like the police department does, like you did publicly, and let the public digest all of it. Because two straight weeks now of this format, I'm just not sure is serving us.
No, and I agree. And that's why from last week, too, that we were looking at a process by which some of these complaints get funneled through the Office of Public Safety Accountability.
Okay, very good. Let's, I got Jeff Harris and I have Katie Valensway.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to say that I have been working with Bridget Dean in the Office of Community Response. We talk often and long about response to homelessness and where we need to go, what kind of facilities we need to build to address this problem. Look, I've represented the River District for six years, and this kind of homeless activity is not unknown to me by any means. It's been ongoing for the entire time that I've been in office. It's a difficult problem, as we all know. There's a housing component. There's a drug abuse component. There's a mental health issue component. There is a sanitation component. We keep trying various projects to solve this, you know, from various angles. And the mayor, you know, has proposed that we get more housing together quickly. All of these things are great initiatives. At some point, we're going to have to get a more systemic approach to homelessness to work towards zero. But the fact of the matter is that, as you could see from the report, and this part really breaks my heart, 28,000 sharps collected, 28,000 needles. Okay, that means that people got really high and really damaged their lives many, many thousands of times. The drug abuse component of homelessness is rampant. It's a real problem. That's why we started the Sure Center. All of these, you know, projects that we bring are helping. They're working at the edges. But this is a massive problem. You need only look at Seattle or Portland to see where we could head in a short period of time. But we are being very energetic about trying to create more places, more facilities, more opportunities for people to deal with their issues on the street. That being said, the impacts of homelessness on the community are very strong. There's a lot of lawlessness. There's a lot of drug abuse. There's a lot... There's a lot of physical abuse. There's a lot of sexual abuse. I just say, let's get real about what's happening on the streets. It's not a happy place. You know, I support our Office of Community Response and, uh, I think that we're moving in a positive direction. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Valenswela.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, and thanks for sending out the video. It's, um, unfortunate, I got sent out around one-thirty to me today, so I haven't had a chance to look at it. So I'll reserve any comments on the specific Alhambra incident and just encourage the public to watch the video. And if there's still questions, we, we can talk about it. But, um, I do just want to note that I couldn't agree more with the sentiment that law enforcement shouldn't be involved in dealing with the homeless. That was the move that was made with Bridget's apartment. But I also have to recognize that it's just Bridget right now, I think. You know, I don't think she has anybody. And we actually haven't set up the Office of Community Response yet. And so I do want to note that I think we're in the middle of the transition and I think that's important for us to communicate to the public is that our hope, my hope is very soon law enforcement isn't responding to these calls, that it is social workers, that it is the city working with community-based organizations, actually compensating advocates and outreach workers to help us, um, manage a situation as best we can while we work on these solutions that we desperately need. And hopefully we'll have more solutions for in the very, very near future. But I do want to recognize, I think, part of the tension that's happening right now is I think folks feel like, hey, we said we were doing this thing and now we're still doing it the old way. And I don't think the transition is fully should happen yet and I hope it happens very, very soon. Um, and that I think, you know, we'll continue that conversation as it goes forward. But, um, do you want to encourage folks? I'm going to be watching the video after the meeting tonight if folks still have questions and, and want to reach out and on that conversation. Would be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I step in real quick? Thank you, Katie and Jeff. I do just want to remind everybody in our community too that, um, the appointment in July was a two-year window to create the department. And to Katie's point, it is just me for the most part right now. So, uh, all of those things you mentioned, Katie, about community connection are coming up February second, when I outline the department. And you'll see all of those concerns that many of the people voiced about the community having a place and being part of the response model and funding and supporting our community-based organizations and the communities that they work in will be part of that next week.
Yeah, I was gonna, except that, let's, uh, get to Rick Jennings here.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I just want to add a couple of comments. Um, I've had an opportunity to work with Bridget as well. And that Office of One is probably one of the most powerful departments that we have in the entire city of Sacramento. Um, she has helped me to work with a young lady who we found living, uh, in the back of the trash can at my nonprofit organization. And she has helped me not only to get her into, uh, housing at a motel, but also to get her into the shelter, uh, at the Metta View Navigation Center. So she's doing incredible work in, in just talking to her. I know that she's talking to each one of you in different issues as well. And so she always responds, whether it's by phone or by text or in person. But she's doing an incredible job and I just want to let it, everybody know, uh, what I've had the opportunity to interact with her in this, in this thing. And then secondly, uh, in response to the videos that Captain Hahn sent out earlier today, I didn't get a chance to go through the entire, uh, two hours of video, but I got a chance to go through thirty minutes. And I was very pleased with how the police interacted with each one of the people who they came in contact with. I didn't see anything that gave me any reason for pause for concern. And, and, and I didn't watch the entire video and I plan on doing that. But what I did see was compassionate officers who were trying to do their best to address the belongings of each person that they were, uh, dealing with. And so when you look at it yourself, I hope you see the same thing I saw for the entire hour of the video. But I saw, I think our officers, I, I would like to see them doing something different as well. But as long as they're doing and helping with the cleanup, then I, I've seen officers who are doing a great job. And I just want to give you that from my, my perspective.
Thank you. Councilmember Lowey.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I know it's been a long night, so I'll try to make this quick. Um, this is a very, very, um, emotional and passionate topic that we continuously talk, uh, talk about. And, you know, there are certain districts, like my district, that, um, and anybody that knows me, I'm, I'm very, very passionate about the homeless, uh, community. But when you come to a district like District Two, it's literally, we're, we're talking about residential areas where residents are lit, are afraid to come out of their house. Businesses that are calling me saying, hey, do something about it. Otherwise, we've got to close up. And, you know, we get a lot of, uh, videos that get sent in. Emotions are building up about this topic. But one of the things that I will truly advise to the people that are so ready with cameras and, and ready to kind of, uh, that have all the solutions is that we're all ears for solutions. If you think that the way that it's going, it's wrong, then, you know, reach out to your council member or more importantly, grab a group of the, the, the homeless community. And if you think three days is not enough, nicely go and get them a room for a whole month. Nobody's going to stop you on that. But this is a very, very tough topic. There is a lot of emotions behind it. Not only we have to protect the homeless community, but we also have to take into consideration the businesses and the residents, especially in districts that are just getting hammered by this issue a lot more than some of the other districts. So, um, again, um, I appreciate everybody's, um, advice on this and I've had a pleasure of working with Bridget. As a one-person show, um, I can tell you that she's been phenomenal. I mean, I'm sending her an email within five minutes. I don't know how she does it. Within five minutes, she's responding back. But we have to take some measures to protect the homeless community and also to protect, protect the residents. My district is literally, is getting hit from every angle, from homelessness to COVID to, um, lack of jobs, crime. I mean, this is just, i- it's becoming very, very, um, stressful right now. Um, I know businesses that are every morning, they go behind their buildings just to pick up needles. That's every morning. It, it does not fail. So we have to also, as a body, we have to represent them as well and not just be one-sided and just focus on one community and say the rest of the community can just, uh, take care of themselves. That's not the case in some of the districts. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So last comment. Um, first of all, for our police officers, let's be honest about it. We put them in a completely untenable, impossible position. We ask them to do things that, that we should not be asking them to do. That's our failure, not theirs. You can pick out anything from video and if, and if an officer has acted in a wrong way, then there should be accountability. But give me a break. We put officers in an impossible situation. And we ought to get them out of the business for their sake. Secondly, Bridget Dean is a gift to us, but she's just getting started and it's a two-year process. You're right. And so we have to be impatiently patient, right? Push always, but recognize that this transformation is going to take some time. And then finally, I get an email from Joe Smith from Lobes and Fishes a few minutes ago talking about encampments and how we're dealing with encampments and cleanup is what he writes me. Hope you all excuse me, Joe, that I'm revealing your, uh, email. I think you intended it to be broadcast. He says, I am getting calls and messages that entire encampments are being wiped out by this storm. I want to have any more of these little fights about how the police are acting or not acting. I'm friggin' sick of it, all of you. When are we going to grasp that until we get people indoors in massive numbers, none of this is going to change? None of it. And so I put off my little resolution saying sixty tiny homes, uh, uh, because we may get greater relief from FEMA. That's fine. It doesn't change the reality. Until we get people indoors and end these encampments in the right way, nothing's going to change. And if there is not as much urgency on the implementation from the council and from the city team, the city staff to actually get product up now, shouldn't take sixty days. Shouldn't take sixty days. There's a huge storm out here. People are going to die tonight. And we just, it's just business as usual. We can't get a goddamn, uh, shelter deck. We can't get a goddamn warm-up center open more than one night because our, the county has rules? I'm sick of this. Stop talking about anything but what it's going to take to bring more people inside in larger numbers. Because that's the only thing that matters. Nothing else matters. None of it. I don't want to waste any more time looking at this video that a cop say this or say that. The activists are pissed. The business community is pissed. There's only one way to provide relief. And that is to bring people indoors in massive numbers. And if you don't want to focus on that, which I know you do, colleagues, but if the rest of the community is, wants to divide on all these, uh, on all these important but tangential issues, have at it. I'm not playing. We're going to bring people indoors in the short term, i- in the medium term and in the long term. Because this is a disgrace, what is going on out there in our community on a cold winter windy night. And we have thousands of people and we don't have shelter for them. And I'm calling out, and, and our county brethren too. Get in the game with us in an aggressive and inactive way. Because these are your constituents as well. Nine-thirty. Think we've had a long enough day. Is there anything else to come before the city council? Now that we're done with this, uh, this item in this review? I don't want any more video debates at the city council. It's not, it, it, we're better spending our time figuring out how we actually get live human beings under real roofs in rapid fashion and in large numbers. Anything else to come before the city council? Thank you. We're adjourned.